All right, I believe it is six o'clock. So in accordance with South Carolina Code of Laws 1985, Section 30-4-80-E, the following have been notified at the time, place, and agenda of this meeting. The Herald, The Charlotte Observer, CN2, and WRHI. If I could ask you first to please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. We'll now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right. Board, you have all received a copy of the agenda. Were there any adjustments or corrections?
No ma'am.
That will stand as posted. And we are going to get started with our favorite thing that we like to do with this, which is some recognition of some of our students. And I believe Mr. Young is going to walk us through them. Thank you.
All right. Well, again, our favorite time to recognize our students and our coaches that do an excellent job. Our first recognition is the Fort Mill High School Girls Track Team, 5A Division II State Champions. If y'all want to come forward, I want to introduce Coach Whitaker. He has been at Fort Mill for eight years. This is five total state championships for him, but the first in girls' track. So let's give a round of applause for Coach Whitaker.
Thank you, Mr. Young. I don't know if this is one of those things where I can wear out my welcome, but I am very excited to be here again. And this is the third time this past school year. So I'm very excited about the work that these teams I've coached now have put in. I'm not sure a lot of people at the beginning of our track season expected us to be here, but thankfully, these girls always believed it was possible. And I know the coaching staff did as well. The coaching staff put so many hours in with all these girls, and they work so hard. I just can't say enough good things about the qualities of who they are as not only athletes, but as people. Fort Mill School District can be proud of all of these athletes. And then a lot of people give us credit or sort of put us in a box as being a strong distance team just because of our success in cross-country. That's not untrue, but let me tell you that this state championship for track was a complete team effort. The girls scored points in almost every single event in the track meet. High jump, long jump, trickle jump, pole vault, relays, distance events, and even throws. We had complete coverage, and they did an outstanding job. I do want to recognize a few folks for some individual achievements during the track meet. We had many All-State performances at the track meet. Mia Williams, who's here tonight, Marissa Jones, Bella Group, Ella Dimmerly, Olivia Cleveland, Mia Zook, and Avery Moriarty, as well as Kaylee Robenstein, all receiving All-State honors. And then in addition to that, we actually won three individual events as well during the track meet. Olivia Cleveland in the 1600, Kaylee Robenstein, who's also here tonight, in the 3200, and our girls' 4x800 relay made up of Avery Moriarty, Ella Dimmerly, Kaylee Robenstein, and Olivia Cleveland also won a state championship. So outstanding performances all around. Can't say enough thank yous to this community here for the support that we get. It's a community effort for sure. So thank you very much.
All right. Next, we have some individual state champions. I'm going to introduce Coach McCoy from Nation Ford High School. He has been at Nation Ford for about six years now, and he's about to honor five individual state champions, which makes 14 total individual state champions for Coach McCoy at Nation Ford. So let's give him a round of applause.
First of all, I want to thank Fort Mill School District for allowing me to be a part of it and coach these young ladies and men. I talked to Coach Whitaker. I want to congratulate them for winning state. But I told him, I said, "Coach Whitaker, if y'all let us win this year, we'll let y'all win next year." So I guess he didn't trust that. But it's, I mean, it's an honor to have them number one and us number two in the state. So I'm thankful for that. But I like to, you know, like I said before, one thing that I'm happy for is that we had this year, from the past six years, a total of 30 kids to sign athletic scholarships in track and field. And one thing that I'm most grateful for and always, you know, tell people is that like when our kids go to the track meet, they're very respectful. And I get that from not only coaches, but other athletes talk about how great of athletes that we have and how respectful they are. So, and I want to first congratulate Neil. Neil won the long jump, 400 hurdles, and the 4x4. He's ranked 23rd in the nation in the 400 hurdles. And before last week, he was ranked number one in the nation in long jump. So he's a big part of our team. That's one of our leaders, and you can't replace him. So, you know, we just hope we can just have people to come in and fall in behind him. Next, I want to introduce you to Chandler Hunter. Chandler's another leader that's on our team. Worked very, very hard throughout his time at Nation Ford. And he signed a scholarship to go to Upstate. That was one of our goals, and he was a part of the 4x4 team that won state. Other 4x4 member, Zara Pickett, he couldn't make it. I mean, Logan Thangs. Logan is a freshman. He stepped right in and filled big shoes. Last year, we lost the 4x4 team. We thought we wouldn't get back there to this level, but he helped come in and break the school record. And from my understanding, that's the first 4x4 boys' team to ever win state in Fort Mill. So that's a blessing to have these guys. And, you know, just hopefully we can just come back with another group of guys and repeat what we did. Last, I want to introduce Gabrielle Bresford. Gabby is one of the quiet leaders on the team. She doesn't say much, but she won state in the 100 and 200. First time from some of the older coaches that I've heard that this is the first time this has ever been done at Fort Mill. So, but once again, I want to thank Coach Chandler, Coach Dillon, just for allowing me and trusting in me to coach our athletes here at Fort Mill. And I want to thank the school board. And I also want to thank the parents. I want to thank the athletes for believing in myself and Coach Chris, which is a big part of our track team and our other coaches. And once again, hopefully, we'll be back here next year to speak to y'all again.
All right. And last but not least, hot off the press just from last week, is our girls' 5A State Champion softball team from Catawba Ridge High School. If you'll come on up. And I would like to introduce their coach, Coach Mayak. He's in his first year at Catawba Ridge, but this is their third straight state championship. And he spent one year as an assistant before this. So let's give a round of applause for Coach Mayak.
Good evening. I was told to be quick, so I will make this quick. As you guys can tell by a lot of the clanging and the amount of medals that you guys see up there, these ladies have been very successful. They are the ultimate competitors. And I will tell you this, they represent everything that is right about being student athletes. These girls are phenomenal, and if I had a young girl in our community, this is the group that I would want for that daughter to look up to. So that is it. Thank you very much.
I have to say, it was really fun at graduation. The amount of bling that walked across that stage with all the jingles of the bells and the medals was awesome. All right. Ms. Houston.
Good evening, everybody. It is my honor to stand before you tonight and recognize 12 exceptional coaches who have gone above and beyond in serving our students through athletics. This year is special as it is our first time in the Fort Mill School District to formally recognize a Coach of the Year at each of our six middle schools, three high schools, and then three Assistant Coaches of the Year. The Fort Mill School District Coach of the Year Awards celebrate outstanding coaches who exemplify excellence in leadership, mentorship, and student development. This recognition goes beyond wins and losses. It honors coaches who lead with integrity, coach with heart, and invest in our students, not just as athletes, but as individuals. These coaches embody our district's core values in every aspect of their work. They put children first every day, prioritizing the growth and well-being of each young athlete. They believe in ensuring all students, regardless of their level or background, feel valued, included, and supported. They understand the power of relationships, building strong partnerships with players, families, colleagues, and our community, and they pursue excellence in everything they do, modeling high expectations, dedication, and a love of the sport that inspires those around them. Each of these coaches devote countless hours before school, after school, and on the weekends to create a positive team culture. They don't do it for the recognition. They do it for the kids. Their work reflects the very best of what we aim to provide for our students through athletics: opportunity, growth, and a sense of belonging. Tonight, we are proud to recognize the following individuals as the 2025 Middle and High School Coaches of the Year and 20 and 25 Assistant Coaches of the Year. These honorees have made a lasting impact on our students, colleagues, and school communities, and we thank them for setting such a powerful example as we strive to create the best athletic programs in our state. We are first going to recognize our middle school Coaches of the Year at Banks Trail Middle School, who coaches football and basketball, Coach Cookie Massey. At Gold Hill Middle School, she coaches volleyball, basketball, and track, and she helps out at every other school event, Coach Joan Gazelle. At Forest Creek, Coach Hansel is coaching football and flag football. He has been a huge help with our starting of our girls' flag football program. At Fort Mill Middle School, the man, the legend, Coach Lamont Hall. Now, he coaches everything: football, basketball, track, and girls' flag football. Pleasantville Middle School, he is extra special to me. He has coached for me. Coach Brian Causey is not here tonight, but he coaches basketball and football as well. And last but not least, at Springfield Middle School, Coach Navia Fisher, who coaches basketball. All right. Now for our high schools. At Catawba Ridge High School, Coach Zach Lindak, the football coach in with the Copperheads. Nation Ford High School, he is not here tonight. He has the first day of practice with his girls, so he chose the girls over us, and I respect. But Craig Brown coaches volleyball and softball for Nation Ford. And last but not least, Fort Mill High School, you guys can take a guess, it's Coach Lee Whitaker. All right. Now, these are the unsung heroes, the assistant coaches. Any good head coach can tell you that their program is defined success when you find quality assistant coaches. So I want to take a second to recognize them. At Catawba Ridge High School, just special again to me, he coached at Nation Ford, was a state championship softball coach at Nation Ford. Now at Catawba Ridge, this is Coach Blue Baker. He wanted to do a speech, but I told him I couldn't let him, so. At Fort Mill High School, Coach Mike Morris, he helps out with our baseball team. And Nation Ford, he just had a baby, so he's at home with his baby, but Coach Anthony Marvel helps out with our football program and our girls' basketball team. Thank you, guys, for helping celebrating our coaches. It's been a true honor to work with them, and just they don't do it for the recognition, so it's just nice to shine a spotlight on some awesome people in our community.
Thank you all very much. I know a lot of people are going to exit for a second, so I'm going to give it a minute.
Our next agenda item is technically a public hearing for the budget. This is something that is required by law. It has been noticed in the local papers and things like that. So this is just an opportunity for Ms. Lourdes to present, really technically, to the community some proposals for our budget for this upcoming school year.
Thank you.
Tonight, the administration is pleased to present the proposed general fund budget. This is for our upcoming fiscal year 2025-2026. As Ms. Spears mentioned, this is for public review and opportunity for comment at the end. I'm happy to report the state budget process is close to completion this year and is pending any governor-mastor vetoes and then the final vote by both House and Senate. We do expect that that will happen in June. We are hearing that the vetoes are probably not going to be education-focused this year, that things are pretty much set for all of the provisos related to education going forward. So we are anticipating that that will happen at the state level by the end of June. As far as our local process, we began this process in January. Once again, we'd just like to point out that the state funding is not favorable for our district under this new education funding model based on this new proportionate share concept. And really, there's two key pieces that do not benefit Fort Mill. One is that when this came about, there was an increase in the poverty weighting. We are still the lowest poverty district in the state. So that causes us to have a lower proportionate share of funding. And then the inclusion of the state charter schools, which I have reported on in previous meetings. I will share that the Budget Conference Committee did decrease the charter school weighting from .65 to .5, which we expect we will see an increase in funding, not as much as we had hoped, but it is moving in the right direction. It also has a provision to set up a task force to further study the whole education funding formula going forward, and if any additional changes need to be made to that. But what we are presenting this evening is based on the Senate version of the budget, and all of our data has been updated for the 135-day average daily membership counts at the state level. So I'd like to start by just giving the public an idea of what were our budget goals this year. And the majority of these have been similar as in prior years. We are bringing to the school board a balanced budget recommendation. It is focused this year probably more so than even some prior years on recruiting and retaining staff in all areas of our district. As an administration, we made the decision that we would prioritize our salary schedules in the hopes of recruiting and retaining staff and remaining competitive. But as always, we want to maintain reasonable class sizes across all levels, elementary, middle, and high. That's important to us in our budget plan. And we need to make sure we stay in compliance with all state ratios and regulations that are required. And then one of the largest impacts on the budget for next year, as everyone knows, is the opening of Flint Hill Elementary School this August. A couple of the important budget points, the highlights. This plan would provide an increase in teacher pay of $2,500 for each cell on our teacher scale. This would bring our starting teacher pay up to $52,500. All of our other pay scales would increase with a 4% cost of living pay increase. And then all eligible employees would have a step increase on their respective pay scales for an additional year of experience for next year. This plan also includes, as you would expect, additional classroom teachers for growth. There's 11 teachers in here for growth. There's four additional special ed teachers and eight special ed classroom teachers. We also have included, we started an initiative last year with special ed instructional coaches at the elementary level. We have proposed to expand that next year to the middle school level. So this includes four new additional special ed instructional coaches that will be specifically for the middle school level. It also includes additional bus drivers and bus aid positions because with the new school opening, the bus routes will need to be reworked, and that triggers the need for additional routes in some areas of our district. So we have added additional bus drivers and bus aids. I'd like to just kind of recap where we are with education funding in South Carolina. Now, we are going into the fourth year under this new, I still call it the new funding formula. This replaced the EFA formula or the Education Finance Act formula. It was based on a set dollar amount per student. This is based on a proportionate share formula, meaning there is a state pot of funding. And as districts change with enrollment and weightings for certain student populations, then it shifts the funding around the state. The hard part about this new funding formula is it is very difficult to estimate our revenue projections. We truly do not know until we receive the state allocations what our funding will mean. It used to be much easier to estimate based for a district like ours, a growing district. We knew X amount per student times the number of new students. But with this new formula, it makes it very difficult to estimate until we actually see the allocations. And then the allocations get adjusted at the 45th day and the 135th day. The other piece of this that I had mentioned, the poverty weighting on the new formula increased from .2 to .5. So that was a very large increase in the poverty weighting for a district like ours that were so low in poverty. But one of the key things that when this came out, the state legislators said they want districts to have more flexibility. They rolled up a lot of individual funding items in the state budget to put it into the big pot, to give local school boards the ability to decide what your priorities are for our district. And then it has increased accountability, which did not impact us very much because we already were doing these things, publishing our budget on the website. We were already using an outside audit firm approved by the state. But it also did create this dashboard on the South Carolina Revenue and Fiscal Affairs website that anyone in the public can go to, and it really is quite useful for comparison. It is an active dashboard that you can inquire on different pieces of district data. And that was part of the new education funding reform, and the name of it now is Aid to Classrooms. So looking at our budget plan for next year, we are proposing a budget of $253,834,935. This is based on a projected student enrollment of 18,618 students. Funding, I will remind everyone, is based on average daily membership. But the 18,618 is based on enrollment at this point in time. But the prior years that you see on this chart are based on average daily membership. But it's always interesting to look at what is our amount spent per student. So you can see that our amount of spend next year would go up slightly to $13,634 per student, and we're estimating a net 2.4% increase in growth. And I say net because we will have new students enroll higher than that amount, but then we will have some students withdraw, we will have December graduates. So this would be the net student enrollment for next year. This slide shows our assessed value. There's a couple of things going on this year with assessed value, but you can see right now, our assessed value is $694,024,584 to date. This is an increase over last year, as we would expect, as we've seen growth in our community, primarily due to residential and some 6% real property growth. And you can see that over this 10-year cycle, our assessed value has more than doubled here in the Fort Mill TAK townships on the tax roll in York County. But 2025 is a year of tax reassessment for York County. So when the bills go out in October, it will be based on the new reassessment values. This summer, after the year closes in June, we will get the final assessment calculations, and we will then have to, working with York County, do the rollback calculation because we're not allowed by state law to have a windfall of revenue due to tax reassessment. So these numbers do not reflect any of the values for tax reassessment at this time.
What's the timing of that?
The timing is everything will close for June. We will work on that in July, early August, because the county will want to know what the tax mileage is by September 1st. the tax millage is by September 1st. Does that help with the timing? This is our, more detail on our projected revenue. We primarily have two sources of revenue, local taxes and the state funding, which is the state education funding. You can see the breakdown. Local taxes fund 57.2% of our budget, and state funding is 38.2%. So we're very heavily dependent on local tax revenue. But this budget plan is an increase of $19,608,619 over our current year budget. As I previously mentioned, the state funding amount on this slide is based on the Senate version of the budget. The transfer from contingency, this will be used towards helping us open Flint Hill Elementary School. We will be able to do that with this plan and keep that transfer at the $2 million, which I'm happy that we're not having to pull in a lot more on that for next year because those are one-time funds. So I think that's beneficial for us if we can keep that at the $2 million level. And then the local taxes on this slide, this includes a 2% growth rate for us for next year, and it includes a millage increase of 20.2 mills. So it does not include the maximum tax millage increase. This includes 20.2 mills. And just as a reminder to everyone, that taxpayers do not pay this school operational millage on a primary residence. So this increase would have no effect on a homeowner's personal property tax bill. This would apply to rental property, vehicles, commercial business, and boats.
Leanne, so say someone sees, sees it on their property tax bill. Where, where do they look so that they can know that that was actually taken off of their?
So there, under the box that has tax due, then there's another box that says credit, and it has a negative number. And that is their credit for Act 388 and not paying the operational school district millage on their tax bill.
Thank you.
The interest income on our plan, I have increased $275,000. We are still seeing steady market rates with the, we are invested primarily with the local government investment pool, and so we're still seeing the interest rates favorable for us. So I was comfortable with increasing the budget for interest income for next year as well. This is a breakdown of our projected expenditures for next year. As always, I think it's important to point out that we are primarily salaries and benefits. So this budget plan, we would still have 89.5% of our expenditures focused on our staffing for next year. So 17.6 million of new money will go towards increasing salaries and benefits and the increase in additional positions related to Flint Hill Elementary. There's 35 positions. Even with shifting teachers from all of our other elementary schools, there are still so many additional positions to open a school, and this would include 35 additional positions for Flint Hill Elementary School. The next highest use of our budgeted funds are related to operations and maintenance of facilities. So you can see that that is 5.7% of our budget. So if you add salaries and benefits and operations and maintenance, that's a little over 95% of our budget goes to those two categories. And then we have our department allocations, per pupil allocations. We still maintain each school receives $110 per student. And in addition, they receive any differences they have for their students that are on free and reduced lunch that do not pay the registration fee. That's included in this number as well for next year. Those schools would receive those additional dollars to compensate for those families not paying, being required to pay the registration fee for next year. This slide shows our category one priorities. And you have, as a board, you have seen this list. We haven't made any changes to this list. This includes items that we consider the highest priority of the district. You can see that number one and two, as I have mentioned, are related to increasing our teacher pay next year, as well as our cost of living increases for all of our other pay scales, our new classroom teachers, our special ed teachers in assistance, opening Flint Hill Elementary. And then you'll see several items that you typically see every year related to utilities, cleaning insurance of our buildings, things like property insurance, and then our technology contracts that are recurring, and they're based on number of students we have, number of staff we have. So those are their inflationary increases. And then transportation. I've mentioned about the bus drivers and the bus aids, the activity buses, gas and repairs. I look at what we spent to operate all of our activity buses this year and project out what we'll need next year. And this was actually the Transportation Department's request because they also reviewed all their accounts in detail prior to meeting with us for the budget discussion. And then their supplies and purchase services. So the total of these items is $18,799,000. This will, would take 18 mills. So this would take 18 of the 21.2 that you could approve. 18 mills are needed to meet the category one priorities for next year. This slide is our category two priorities. We only have two items here. We have an increase on the substitute daily pay rate from $100 to $116. I had shared some data with the board at a previous meeting with comparative analysis of surrounding districts and what their subpay rates were, and we were lower than those districts. We have not increased our subpay since November of 2020. We have been at $100. We generally operate at about a 90% daily fill for classrooms, and we have about 10% unfilled. And when they go unfilled, that means that the schools have to figure out a way to cover those classrooms, whether it's some front office staff helping or dividing the students and splitting them among other classrooms. And then the second item is an increase across the district for stipends. As I said, our focus on the budget this year was about recruiting and retaining our staff and compensating them for all the work they do with the students. So this would provide an increase in our athletic stipends. That includes our band stipends. And also, each school gets an extracurricular stipend allocation, all of our elementary schools, middle and high schools. And those funds are given to the school, and the principal, working with their administration team determines how to distribute those funds, and it varies by school, depending on what clubs are at the school, what kind of other activities they have, such as theater, chorus, newspaper, Model UN. Those are a few that come to mind. There's a whole list of things that the principals use these funds for, to give those teachers a little extra something for giving up their afternoons or evenings or weekends to work with students on these extracurricular activities. So this would provide funding across the district to increase all of our extracurricular stipends in some way for next year. We have not in the past had a recurring replacement methodology for these, where we increase it every year for cost of living percentages. But that may be something that you have asked us to look at doing going forward so that we don't get so far behind on some of these, is to try to have more of a smaller increase, maybe annually, and other districts, some other districts do that, where they try to match whatever their cost of living is on their other pay scales. They go ahead and do that on some of their extracurricular stipends as well, and provide the cost of living increase. So this, these two additional items for category two, this would require 2.2 mills. So if we add that to the 18, we would be asking you to approve a budget of 20.2 mills. So we are still not at the maximum amount. We would still be under the maximum that you could approve of 21.2. And this is how that is determined. So based on Act 388, it's a state formula, the millage rate increase is based on two pieces. One is the Consumer Price Index, and that is 2.95%. And so every district in South Carolina has that same authority, the 2.95%. And then the other piece of that is your population growth. So our population growth, and this is given to us by the South Carolina Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office, is 4.45%. So when you add those two together, you have the authority to increase our millage 7.4% over our current year millage, operating millage, which is 287.4 mills. So that is where the 21.2 mills comes from as the maximum. In the state law, you do have the ability to go back and recapture millage from any millage that has not been implemented in the past three years. So I provide this little chart just to show you that we did that two years ago, so we don't have any millage available. So 21.2 is our maximum that we have available. We always get the question about what would be the impact to our taxpayers. So I ran this just a couple of scenarios. One is a 6% property at a $200,000 value. So at 20.2 mills, it would be $243 a year or $20.20 a month. Commercial property at 10.5%. This would be like furniture fixtures and equipment inside a business at $200,000. That would be $424 a year or $35.35 a month. And then a car, which has a 6% assessed value now at $40,000, that would be $49 a year or $4.04 a month. This is our operating millage history, and you can see that there is a direct correlation between our growth in students, our growth in our budget, and our operating millage necessity to increase over this time. We do also in York County have a countywide millage of 30 mills. That is divided among the four York County districts based on average daily membership. And the first mill off the top goes to York School District because they are the highest poverty district of the four of us. And then the other 29 mills is distributed among the four of us based on our average daily membership. We are the highest. We are currently at 38.7% of the pot. Rock Hill is next, and they're at 32.9% of the pot. We have, right now, based on this year's 135-day counts, we have 2,728 more students than Rock Hill, who's the second highest in York County. So they are roughly at 15,460 students, and we're at 18,188 for our 135-day average daily membership. This is the state insight data. All school districts in South Carolina are required to send our financial data at the end of the year to the state, and they compile district information in a standardized form for reporting. And we always usually go to that because when we compare ourselves to another district, we know that it has exactly the same type expenditures included, meaning it doesn't include debt, doesn't include capital, because that can vary by district. But we always like to show how we compare locally. So you can see that it ranges from $12,128 per student to $14,018 per student. And we are the lowest of the four York County districts. We're also lower than the state average. So the state average was $13,483. In the past, you've asked me, well, can you give me that data compared to a few other districts in the state that are similar or in, similar in size or larger than us? So I pulled a few of those. Lexington won. They're a fast-growing district. Their amount of expenditures per pupil was $13,474. Ori County was $13,507. Charleston was $15,272. Richland won was $19,043. And Fairfield was $22,592. So we say this to say that we feel like our spending is very conservative compared to districts surrounding us as well as statewide. We feel like we're very mindful of taxpayer dollars and how we allocate and what we come to you and ask you to approve for a spending plan for next year. This concludes our public budget presentation for the proposed budget for next year. We now invite any comments from the audience who would like to speak. Also, this will be posted on our website for any feedback. But in summary, I'd just like to say that even with our continued growth and our challenges with state funding, this administration here, we are dedicated to maintaining this district at the highest level to meet the needs of our students and the expectations of our community. We value and appreciate your support, school board, and certainly the public support that we get, and we feel that this plan continues to meet our goals that we presented at the beginning of this.
So this is not our traditional public participation. This is specific to the, the budget hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak about the budget? Okay. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Lordy. We're going to talk about it again here in just a little bit, but we will move on with the rest of the agenda then at this point. Our next agenda item is the approval of the minutes. We had two, actually, three, because I forgot about the special call since our last approval. I'll start with the minutes from the May 6th board meeting. Were there any adjustments or corrections?
No, ma'am.
All right. Those will stand unanimous consent. Then we also met on May 20th. Adjustments, corrections?
No, ma'am.
Those will stand with unanimous consent. And then we had a special call meeting on the 22nd. Any adjustments or corrections there?
No, ma'am.
All right. Also approved with unanimous consent. Now we get to the traditional public participation. I think I have one, two, three, four cards. We'll do three and a half minutes apiece, and they were given to me in a certain order, so that's how I'm going to call them out. The first one, if you'll come up, introduce your, yourself, your name, your address, and then you'll have your time. Frank Jernak.
Good evening. My name is Frank Jernak. My wife, Nancy, and I live at 2591 Lower Assembly Road in Fort Mill. I'm here today to strongly urge the school board to join our group of concerned citizens opposing the operation of the Seifel plant. I hope to share with you my concerns in an effort to make you help make the best decisions for the students and teachers. I'm a retired engineer with 42 years of experience, and I've spent my entire engineering career in light and heavy manufacturing industries. I've been retired since 2002, but I'm so concerned about the chemicals and the hazards at the Seifel plant that I just had to become involved. During my engineering career, I have worked with some of the hazard chemicals that would be used- that would be used at the Sylphab plant. The list of chemicals and the quantities involved are absolutely staggering. The MDS sheets for them are a terrifying read. They not belong near any of our children, schools, or teachers. If you don't know what an MSDS sheet is, Material Safety Data Sheets, it lists all the hazards involved with these chemicals. They're terrifying reading, folks. I cannot fathom what the consequences would be to the children in the nearby schools if something terrible were to happen. I've been in the manufacturing arena just about all my engineering career. And ladies and gentlemen, if that you do not want to happen, indeed, do happen, no matter what they say. Our schools are less than a quarter mile from the Sylphab facility. If someone said to me that it was only a probability of 1% or 0.1% of something disastrous happened with the quantities of the chemicals involved, I would definitely say that the risk is too great when it comes to concerns of our children and teachers. Please, please, as members of the Fort Mill School Board, join us in our fight. You have a very, very strong voice here in Fort Mill. Please use that voice in our fight. I cannot urge that, cannot overemphasize that, folks. Use that voice. Thank you for hearing my concerns.
There's three separate names that I understand want to speak separately. I'll call you guys all up at once, and you can negotiate it in your time. It's Gail Vauder, Dave Vauder, and Bethany Swett.
We can fight it out when they get up here.
Okay. I'll let you guys do it.
Good evening. I'm Gail Vauder. I've been in the school district since 1999.
Your address, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There you go.
1661 Spandrel Lane in Fort Mill in the Knightsbridge neighborhood. I've been a parent of two Fort Mill High School graduates. One who's an environmental ed, no, environmental ed teacher, and then one who is actually an environmentalist in Charlotte working with chemicals such as Sylphab is producing. I taught for 21 years, sixth and seventh grade science. And science, of course, is my passion. I've served the district as District Teacher of the Year. I've served as liaison with Winthrop University. I've won different awards, but I'll be honest with you. None of that matters because I now have a grandson who's going to be at Flint Hill Elementary. So none of that matters as much as my grandson. Every single year as a teacher, we went through the trainings and the emergency things with the Katawba Nuclear Plant. I mean, even one year, we even got practice getting on the bus, getting on the bus and off the bus. And of course, as a blessing, so far, nothing has ever happened since 1999, since I've been here with that. But with the proximity of Sylphab to Fort Mill Elementary, I'm certainly hoping that you will implore the district to have trainings for the teachers, especially substitutes. I'm now substituting in the different schools. And I know as a substitute, when I walk in, I don't know any of the procedures. I know them because I taught here, but if I was a substitute not in the district, I wouldn't know those procedures. So I implore you to train the substitutes so they know what to do in a matter of an emergency. I know that we have ventilation systems installed in the schools because of COVID. I personally don't think those are adequate at Flint Hill Elementary. So I also implore you to look at the different filtration systems there. I do fear for all of our students, our teachers, our administrators at the schools. You know, Dr. Epps, I'm so happy to have worked with you all these years. And your motto has always been children first. So I have my little pin, children first. And for those of you that are not grandparents yet, you'll find out when you have a grandchild, it's children first. Like, those children matter more than anything. So I just ask you to step forward, stand behind us in our fight. Now it's very personal. Please protect my grandson. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Dave Vauder, 1661 Spandrel Lane, Fort Mill. And I am honored to be before you, speaking to my very favorite school district. I have come late to the Sylphab discussion. My son is an environmental engineer, and I asked him to look at the chemicals. And he came back to me and he said, Dad, these are really dangerous. And he does soil testing, and so it's important to me. And then he said, how did they get approved? And I said, well, they're considerate, light industrial. And he went, he rolled his eyes. That would seem to be interesting. And if I have 18 seconds, I'm in serious trouble.
That is the time, but since you guys had three on your card, if you want to go an extra minute or so, that's okay.
I'm sorry. I thought it was three each. Sorry. Okay. I'll do this really quickly. My area of research is development, specifically of the brain. And what we know is that the younger the brain, the more damaging anything happens. One of the concepts is teratogens. So if this building was next to Sylphab and there was an accident, they would not be as damaging as if it was at the high school. It'll be even worse at a middle school, but we put an elementary school there. And because their brains are not done, it's dangerous. In good conscience, I cannot put my own students in field experience or even student teaching there. I couldn't do that. And so I'm going to suggest to Winthrop that they may look at not putting anybody there, but that's beyond my purview, but I won't put my own. With that being said, I ask that this board write and pass a resolution of non-support and make sure that is published so that all entities know that you don't support this, which would also provide a legal background and safety for you. But as my wife said, kids first, protect the children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bethany Swett, and I live at 1559 Pine Bluff Court in Fort Mill. I'm speaking as a former Fort Mill student, a former educator, and a mother of a current Fort Mill student. I am here to implore you to help join the fight to stop Sylphab. My family moved here in 1999 because Fort Mill had the best public education around. I graduated in 2009 from Fort Mill High School, and I knew that one day I wanted my kids to go through the Fort Mill school system. But I can't imagine being a current student and wondering every day sitting in a classroom next to Sylphab if I'm safe. Today's children have enough to worry about without a dangerous plant next door. As a former educator, I know the sacrifice that teachers make every day for their students, but I can't imagine having also sacrificed my safety to teach in an area that is potentially dangerous for my health. Teachers have enough to deal with also. As a parent, my job is to keep my children safe. How can I say that I'm doing that if I allow my children to go to a school next to a plant that will house over 500,000 pounds of hazardous materials? How can I allow my children to go to a school that has no evacuation plan in case of disaster? I personally know parents that are moving to a different part of the district, parents that are putting their kids in private school, and parents that are pulling their kids to do homeschool, all because of Sylphab. For those of us that do not have these options, the helplessness we feel is gut-wrenching. We should be celebrating being chosen to go to a state-of-the-art, brand-new school. Instead, we are dreading it and terrified. We are begging you to fight with us, to show us that Fort Mill School District truly puts student first. Please help protect our children. Thank you.
Thank you. The next card is Ashley Horn.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Horn, and I live at 4104 Bamrow Drive in Fort Mill. On behalf of parents across Fort Mill, we're happy that the School Board has finally acknowledged that there is a risk to opening two new schools next to Sylphab as opposed to the previous dismissive responses. Even though you've now acknowledged the risk, the community's concerns remain that rather than stating any kind of opposition of this risk to the county, the Board is simply looking to mitigate the risk as opposed to helping eliminate it. School Boards around the country have been standing alongside parents to protect children and teachers in eerily similar situations, while Fort Mill remains silent and seemingly complicit. Why is this? Why is it so hard to say that you object to this unnecessary risk next to our children? Why has the Board still not reached out to concerned parents to have a conversation? Please have a dialogue and partner with us. We're expecting to receive USC's Phase III findings in July, and we look forward to sharing and discussing these results with you. With Mr. Young being appointed the new superintendent, now is the time for a new direction, one of collaboration with the community. We welcome the opportunity to have an actual discussion on what should be done to protect our children and teachers. And I have some documents to show why mitigation is not an option to keep our kids safe here. The only option here is elimination of the risk. If I can come and pass those out.
Sure. All right. And then one additional card, Philip Pleasant.
Good evening. I come in peace. I'm not going to talk about Sylphab. My name is Philip Pleasant. I'm from 14, my residence is 1449 Bramblewood Drive. I'm a father of two boys in this district. I'm a coach. I'm a founder of a youth wellness program called The Reset. A few seasons ago, I coached a boy with real talent, but every time the sky got cloudy, his anxiety took over, and he froze. One day, instead of pushing him to play, I went down on one knee, and I got down beside him, and I told him, let's just breathe through it together. That moment changed everything. A year later, his mother called me, and she said, she said it was the same kind of storm, right? A different team, same anxiety. And she said, Coach, I did exactly what you did. I got down on one knee, and we breathed through it, and it worked. That's the heart of Reset. But for me, this is deeper than sports. I lost my father when I was two to suicide. And just last year, I lost my brother the same way. Two strong and smart men, gone, not because they weren't capable, but because no one ever taught them how to deal with what was going on inside. That pain turned into purpose for me, and Reset was born from a promise to help the next generation learn how to breathe and reflect and how to reset before life overwhelms them. Just a few weeks ago, two of my son's friends got into a fight at school. One moment, one reaction, and it could have changed their futures. I asked ChatGPT, I'm sure you guys, all you ChatGPT, I said, I asked, I said, if I was trying to stop a child from succeeding, what would I do? I wouldn't touch their grades. I'd convince them that they're not enough. I'd flood their lives with distraction and make them believe their emotions don't matter. That's what's happening now with phones, social media, and pressure from every direction. But Reset flips the script. We give kids real tools to handle the hard moments, tools that build focus, emotional strength, and resilience. Because the truth is, kids can't learn if they're overwhelmed. Emotional wellness isn't separate from academic success. It's the foundation for it. The program is ready. So I brought something for you guys. These are just one-pagers. These are just a little bit about my program. What we do. I'm probably messing this up.
That's all right. Pass them around if we need to.
So that first one is just a copy of one of our workshops that we do. That's a comic strip. And we go through just hard times, hard things that kids have to go through. The next one is the implementation plan for Gold Hill, right? And what I'm asking for is to implement that plan at Gold Hill Elementary and Pleasant Knoll. I'm asking for that because my two sons go there, and we use Reset almost every day. I've been a coach for six years here in Fort Mill, and I've been using that. And if you follow me on Instagram, if you follow me on Facebook, you'll see that these techniques work. And so I'm asking you to partner with me and just recommend to our school's administration to get me in there and encourage them for me to be a part of their program so that I can come in and help out. Because that's all I want to do, is to help the next kid breathe through anxiety. That when it gets cloudy, yep. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. We've now got a special presentation. Mr. Burke, do you want to set this up for us?
Thank you all. As you well know, we have been working over the past, actually, several months to try to identify a reputable national health sciences firm that could come in and look over what's going on and perform a comprehensive risk assessment related to Flint Hill Elementary and Middle School along with the Sylphab industry plant that's proposed to go next door. We have now reached that point where we were able to identify a company. We have tonight with us Citadel EHS, and Julie Wojnowski is going to come in. She's going to talk a little bit about them, what they do, their experience, and then specifically about the scope of work that we have going on. Just as a quick reminder or refresh, we received a letter from the PHSU back in February. This was the recommendation of them that we have this assessment performed. We then followed some of their recommendations for people to go through. We were not able to identify a company down that method. And actually, Ms. Wojnowski heard about what was going on and reached out to us and said, hey, we'd love to come in and talk to you guys. They came in and met with the district administration and talked with us about what they do and the type of works they perform. And of course, we immediately thought it'd be a great fit. So they are now working with us. The work is actually already underway, and I'll let Ms. Wojnowski take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see. Can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
All right. So hello, members of the Fort Mill School Board, teachers, students, parents, family members, and members of the Fort Mill and York County community. My name is Julie Wojnowski. My husband, Tom, our cat, Hannah, our dog, Violet, and, God willing, future family are proud residents of Fort Mill. We call 495 Forest Way Drive our home. And for context, that's approximately 1.2 miles or 6,336 feet or an 18-minute brisk walk from the Sylphab solar facility in Fort Mill. I'm here tonight as both a concerned resident and a professional environmental health and safety specialist with Citadel EHS, a nationally-recognized employee-owned firm that's been delivering science-based environmental solutions for over 30 years. We've been engaged by the Fort Mill School District, as Joe mentioned, to conduct an independent environmental health safety assessment, both in preparation for the opening of Flint Hill Elementary and in light of the nearby development of Sylphab Solar Manufacturing Facility and its potential associated environmental health and safety risks. Our job is to perform an in-depth, transparent evaluation examining both emissions and the school's internal systems so this community can move forward with facts, clarity, and trust. We have no affiliation with Sylphab Solar. Our sole responsibility is to provide reliable, fact-based insights so that the district, the Board, and the community can make informed decisions that prioritize health, safety, and trust. Citadel's work is rooted in four core commitments. Independence: we are not affiliated with Sylphab or any other external party. Scientific integrity: our evaluations are performed by credentialed professionals following best practices and methodologies. Transparency: our findings are clearly communicated to school leadership and the broader community. And accountability: our work is evidence-based, community-sensitive, and rigorously documented. We believe that environmental and human health decisions should be made openly, collaboratively, and with care, especially when they affect children and educators. We are 100% employee-owned, as I mentioned, and we have more than three decades of experience in environmental health and safety consulting. Our team includes engineers, scientists, certified industrial hygienists, toxicologists, geologists, and regulatory experts, bringing a wide range of specialized expertise to every project. For over three decades, as I mentioned, we've worked in the most For over three decades, as I mentioned, we've worked in the most heavily industrialized region in the country, areas shaped by long histories of manufacturing and oil refinery, chemical production, and the like. We've built our reputation in places with some of the strictest environmental and public health regulations in the US, especially around emissions, air quality, and community health protections. We've been recognized by the Environmental Protection Agency for leadership in sustainability, innovation, and climate and safety, and were certified by FEMA and the GSA to operate in high-security and emergency-responsive environments. We also carry extensive liability insurance reflecting the confidence of our clients, that our clients place in us, and the seriousness with which we approach every engagement. We specialize in environments where community concerns, public health, and industry intersect. Often, our work takes place in settings just like this, under immense scrutiny, where trust, clear information, and sound science are essential. We help school districts, municipalities, and private industry navigate environmental and health risks and concerns, translate technical issues into accessible language, and move forward with objective solutions, plans, and shared understanding. We were brought in to objectively assess the environmental and health safety risks associated with Sylfab's adjacent industrial activities and to recommend best practices, policies, and procedures that the school district can and should employ to ensure student, staff, and community safety. We're here to advocate for facts, for safety, and for public trust. At the same time, we recognize this is deeply personal and sometimes emotional for many in the community. So we respectfully ask for your grace and for the opportunity to demonstrate that this work is being done with integrity, objectivity, and care. We're not here to defend or dismiss concerns, we are here to listen, as you've all asked, to evaluate and to offer science-based guidance rooted in decades of experience. In the next few slides, I'll share more about who we are and why you can trust us to approach this process with the seriousness and expertise it deserves. But before I go a little bit further, I want to make sure we're all on the same page with a few key terms. Indoor air quality, in our field, we affectionately refer to it as IAQ. And this is the air inside buildings like classrooms, offices, and indoor air quality is how it affects health. HVAC, or heating, ventilation, air conditioning, and that is the system that heats, cools, and circulates air indoors. VOCs, or volatile organic compounds, and particulate matter, PM, are types of pollutants we might assess. VOCs often come from things like cleaning agents or building materials. Particulate matter is made up of tiny particles that can be inhaled and sometimes travel from industrial sources. We use a shared language now to ensure that everything we present is understandable and actionable. We have extensive experience, as you can see here, supporting schools and community where health and safety intersect with public trust. At LAUSD, the first one on the slide, we've been a partner for over 20 years. We're leading asbestos-led indoor air quality and safety efforts. We're ranked number one overall in their hazardous material contract for technical expertise and long-term performance. At Caltech, we perform, we performed VOC and wind monitoring to prevent HVAC intake contamination from lab exhaust, using rooftop sensors and real-time data to inform facility planning and monitoring. At UCLA, we managed over 2,000 projects and counting involving hazardous materials, indoor air quality, and lab safety across major campus upgrades. And at San Bernardino, we completed campus-wide HVAC and air quality assessments during COVID-19, helping guide safety reopening with ventilation and filtration evaluations. These projects reflect our ability to support complex educational environments with both technical and community care. We also work in sensitive public sector and community environments where transparency and trust are similarly essential. At Hollywood Park, some of you may be familiar with the Ram Stadium, obviously the NFL headquarters. This project, as you can imagine, was community-led, community-driven, public-private-sector stakeholder engagement. We were responsible for the oversight across the 500,000-plus-square-feet renovation of that community. The work involved hazardous material surveys, dust vibration studies, and active community engagement, especially near local schools and public institutions. For the Watts Affordable Community in Los Angeles, we led the country's largest residential-led in-water study in Los An, in the US history. We conducted independent testing of more than 2,966 water samples and blood lead level samples. The effort responded directly to community concerns and included public health coordination, mitigation planning, and deep resident engagement to ensure a safe and transparent outcome. Following the Pacific Palisades fire and currently, we mobilized rapidly, we were onsite day two, to assess post-fire conditions at the Palisades Charter High School. Our team led industrial hygiene and safety, indoor air quality assessments, and coordinated with public authorities, and helped support the relocation and safe return of 2,500 students within just 30 days. This project is active, ongoing. I'm happy to report that the first buildings are meant to be redeveloped in the next two weeks and no students, the students were only displaced for 30 days. Record timing. So these are not just technical projects, they're people-centered responses in moments where communities need assurance and leadership the most. Now to talk about some industrial and environmental oversight that our team does, we bring strong experience in this arena and we, these are a couple of examples. During the redevelopment of a former cement plant, we provided ongoing particulate matter dust monitoring to help maintain air quality standards. And our oversight supported a complex land-use transition from the cement plant and the industrial infrastructure to community redevelopment while, all while ensuring public health remained at the forefront. At a major US refinery conversion project, we oversaw environmental health during its transformation into one of the largest biofuels facilities in the country. Our team provided daily health and safety oversight, which meant at least eight to 10 to 12, 14-hour days onsite, watching every single person that was working on that site for safety. And then I think really pertinent to this project is, for a pharmaceutical company, we performed a detailed fire and explosion risk assessment related to flammable solvents, newly reclassified. Our services included process hazard analysis, regulatory compliance review, and the California Fire Code and flammability modeling to guide safe operations. These projects demand more than just the technical skill, they require communication, coordination, and understanding of the broader community impacts of the industrial activity. Now, for the current scope of work, our team of environmental compliance experts, certified industrial hygienists, certified safety professionals, and certified hazardous material experts are currently conducting an independent review of Sylfab Solar's facility's emission-related documents, including air permits, chemical inventories, emissions modeling, and their emergency response protocols. This helps us to understand what potential exposures may exist outside the school environment so we can accurately help the school district evaluate any possible impact to Flint Hill, the Flint Hill Elementary campus. These, they're also reviewing the school district's documentation, including HVAC systems, filtration standards, airflow specifications, maintenance protocols, trainings, emergency preparedness, and evacuation. This allows us to evaluate how well the schools are positioned to maintain healthy indoor air quality and emergency-prepared responses in relation to those external sources. Based on what we learn, we'll create a detailed plan that includes potentially air quality monitoring, water quality monitoring, and selecting target contaminants should we pursue air, should the district decide to pursue air quality monitoring at strategic locations, and building quality control measures to ensure data is accurate and meaningful and potentially transparent. The district is also considering, in the process of considering the Well Health Safety Rating, we met about that today. It's a globally recognized certification for buildings to ensure that they are operating safely for the people that are in them and the communities that are around them. And then finally, the most important piece is community engagement and education. It's a critical part of this process, we realize, as does the Fort Mill School District, given why we're here. We'll be facilitating briefings like this to the school board, meetings with staff and community sessions like this one to ensure everyone is kept informed, educated, and involved in the conversation. Once the plan is finalized, we'll support the district in deciding on implementation methods and improvements on document, on documentation. The goal is not just to assess, but to help act in ways that strengthen safety, trust, and long-term preparedness. We're committed to providing an independent, unbiased assessment of environmental conditions in Fort Mills, for Fort Mill schools. Our team of certified professionals are using rigorous industry-standard methodologies to analyze the data and deliver reliable, defensible results. We'll translate the complex findings into clear, accessible information to support informed decision-making by school stakeholders. Throughout our partnership, we will be responsive to any concerns that arise and work with the district to develop adaptive solutions. Our goal is to be a trusted partner, transparent partner, to ensure the health and safety of the Fort Mill School community. In closing, to the families, educators, and leaders of the Fort Mill Schools, thank you. Thank you for your attention in trusting us with this very critical impactful work and your commitment to safety of students, staff, and the Fort Mill and York County community. At Citadel, we believe that the strongest communities are the one that face the hard decisions together with openness, expertise, and care. And we are very, very proud, humbled, and honored to work here with you. We look forward to continuing this important conversation in partnership.
Thank you. Can, can I ask?
You can.
Do you have a timeline for sort of the next steps of when information may be available, both for the board and the community and, you know, in terms of findings?
Yes, so the first phase of work is obviously to assess all of Sylfab's documents and the district's documentation. And we're in the process of formulating that action plan, as I mentioned in the slide. We hope to have that preliminary action plan to Joe and team by early next week. We'll then have discussions about that plan and answer any questions and talk about the implementation of that. In terms of the Well Health Safety Rating, we are in the process of collating all of that documentation. That is related to things like air quality, water quality, sanitization, and emergency preparedness. And so we're collecting all that documentation, analyzing it, and we will be ready to submit for that health safety rating when the school doors open. And that is the one requirement of that health safety rating. So all of the policies and procedures to achieve that will be in place long before school opens. And I should just say that this is just the first phase of work. We envision and have had discussions with many of you that this, we hope that this is a long-term engagement. This assessment is just the start and to come for quarters and years of, you know, ongoing updates and adjustments to any policies or programs that we decide on.
And then just one other question. As I understand it, the two main things that I, that I see, one is the analysis around, again, air quality, sort of day-to-day operations and, and VOCs and particulate matter and all those things, which can't really be done until Sylfab is operational, if they become operational. I mean, you can still check the air today, but as far as the Sylfab impact on it, doesn't exist yet. The other piece, though, is the looking at both the Sylfab existing controls, recommending additional controls, anything that the district would need to do in terms of emergency planning and so on and so forth, right? That, that is a component as well as just, not just the monitoring of sort of normal operations if they were to begin.
Yes, so I'll answer that in two parts. And I don't want to speak for our industrial hygienists or our environmental compliance experts on the things that we would recommend testing for. But I can give you two examples. So we are actively, or our team is actively looking at the emergency preparedness plans, the risk management plans, the MDS sheets that were previously mentioned for all of the chemicals and processes that will be onsite. In tandem, we're looking at the district's plans for emergency preparedness, evacuation, response, cleaning policies, ventilation, cooling, filtration, so on and so forth. And the goal is to, one, come up with a monitoring plan that is in alignment with the requirements set forth by the EPA. So the EPA sets forth requirements, our team is reviewing these, I have reviewed them as well. And Sylfab is required to monitor the air quality in their containment infrastructure where there would be transfer of any chemicals. That is in a, in a bunker that is fire-rated. That fire-rated bunker then would capture any fumes that come out. I'm not an engineer here and I don't want to get into the details of it, but what I'm trying to say is we're looking at that level of detail of Sylfab's permitting and requirements, and they will have to monitor the air quality in that containment structure and in their air stack. They are required by law to monitor that ongoing. And so the idea is, is that the school district, we would advise the school district on having a plan in place for air quality monitoring that aligns with the, with Sylfab's air quality monitoring so that there are any triggers in place or there's communication between both parties, if it's agreed upon between both parties, to ensure that students be evacuated, students be brought indoors, or students not come in that day. And so the idea is that we are doing a holistic review of what Sylfab is required to do by the EPA, and we will be helping to recommend what the policies and procedures that the district should have or could do in addition to, to be able to ensure that the environments are as safe as possible. Did that answer your question?
I think so.
I have two, two, two questions. First one is, would, would Citadel be open to using, because we've had a lot of reports, professional reports come out at this point from, from the, from the Sylfab movement, would they be open to receiving those documents, analyzing those documents, and seeing, you know, because ultimately, we want to get to the truth, right? Would that be something?
Absolutely.
To do, okay. Second question is, is there any appetite at all, because this is such a personal matter, to do any kind of, you know, in that, in that transparency scope, to have some kind of, I don't know, some kind of public outreach portion of this to keep everybody informed of what's going on? Because I think a lot of it is just a lack of, you know, just a lack of transparency, right? And is there, would you all be covering that as well?
That's certainly something we've discussed with, with the team internally. Stakeholder engagement is a big portion of this phase of the work. And when I say stakeholder engagement, I mean those things, what I'm doing right now. And personally, I was a nurse for 15 years and my, my real interest here as someone that lives and will grow my family in this community is to help educate people about this. And to help you all and staff, students, and members of the community to feel like you understand all of the technical jargon, because those big words, even just the few that I shared, are scary if you just see them in short form. So to answer your question, I am open to that. Joe and I have discussed that. Citadel, my company is willing to do that and my CEO is invested in doing that as well. And then any documents that, that you can share that aren't publicly available right now, please send them our way. I can tell you that our team internally is I can tell you that our team internally is looking at what is publicly available. So we're going to the source of truth, which is where permits are, you know, registered and available for viewing. We're looking at those SDS sheets for the chemicals, but anything else that is out in the ether that we can find, the USC study, things like that, we are taking into consideration. And so, you know, we want to review that, and we want to be here for the long haul to help you all and to help this community. And really, I want to feel safe living where I do. And so whatever it is that we can do to help, we have the expertise. It's one of the beautiful things about our firm, I'll be honest with you, is it's unique. We have five different practices, and in most cases, you would have to go to five different companies or three different companies to get the specialty and the years of expertise that we have. It is employee-owned, and that means that every single one of us own a stake in the decisions and the work that we do. And we'll also tell you not to just continue to brag about this company, but our CEO owns no stake in the company, not one single share. And that speaks to the heart of what we're doing, and I think the work that I've shared with all of you speaks to that, too. We really enjoy and thrive when we're working with communities and multiple stakeholders and trying to really just speak layman's terms so that we all can get into agreement and find a pathway forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask you one more?
Of course.
Because you're talking publicly available documents.
Yes.
Is there at any point in the process where you guys would consider, if Sylfab was willing, a more physical review or inspection, so it's not simply document-based?
Yeah, sure. I will say that our team has been in communication with Sylfab, regular communication over the last few weeks. We have requested documentation from them, and they have actually requested that we do a tour. And so I'm not, that won't be a formal inspection at this point, but I want to see it. And Joshua, my colleague here, is going to go as well, and so they've reached out and they've requested that, and they really do want to collaborate on this.
To share the information, so it's not just what?
Exactly.
To Chairwoman Spear's point, a lot of air quality stuff, it's, we can't, we don't know.
There's nothing to test.
There's nothing to test yet. And so, yeah, if, whatever happens, if it ends up, if it ends up going forward, that is something I know I would like to see, to get ongoing data as far as that goes.
One of the requirements for Sylfab may be that they have to publish that information transparently, the information about their air quality monitoring.
And when you say requirement, what you really mean is one of the recommendations that may come out of that would be?
I believe, but I could be mistaken. That's why our experts are reviewing all of those permits, that they have to keep track of the monitoring of their stack and their facility on a regular basis, and there could also be a requirement that that monitoring, in some way, shape, or form, whether that information, that data is aggregated or not, has to be made publicly available on a regular basis. To answer your question, Joe, or to dive a little bit more into detail, a best practice in terms of indoor air quality monitoring is to actually get a base, do a baseline assessment. And so it's one of the things that our team is considering right now. So we, if this were to be what the team recommends in the final recommendation or the action plan, typically what happens is we would come in before students or any staff are in the building, and we would do indoor air quality monitoring, likely outdoor air quality monitoring, just to see how things are. It gives us a really good baseline, and then we do it after occupancy, because the greatest variable in indoor air quality testing and results is actually us. We wear perfume, we have, we use fabric softener, hairspray, makeup, there's, you know, VOCs and particulate matter that get brought in from our feet and all of that stuff. And so typically, you do that baseline beforehand, then you do a post-occupancy after you've given time for literally like the construction dust to settle and all the normal activities of school to take place. And then the, we would recommend past that how often to do testing, and of course, likely a strong recommendation to do ongoing testing as Sylfab ramps up. What our certified industrial hygienist and environmental compliance team are looking at right now is those SDS sheets from Sylfab, those chemicals that they're using, to determine what types of samples we actually take and which ones are direct read from an instrument that we can get ongoing data from and analyze, and which actually have to be sent to a laboratory to be analyzed and third-party verified. And so this is a multi-pronged approach. We'll determine with the school board how we proceed, but just wanted to give you a little bit of insight into how air quality monitoring is typically approached. And that air quality monitoring is approached in tandem with an in-depth review of the HVAC and mechanical plans, the ventilation, a physical ventilation assessment where we bring out devices and determine that the ventilation, the HVAC system is taking in enough and filtering enough indoor and outdoor air at the appropriate rates based on ASHRAE, which is the air quality standard. And so you have to couple the testing and the methodology with the in-depth review of the documentation, and then you review all of those results against industry standards that come from the EPA. I will tell you that the Well Building Standard or the Well Health Safety Rating includes points for, that the district is planning to pursue at this point for indoor air quality and water quality monitoring. And the Well Building Standards is independent. They're a company that actually collates all of the research in air quality, water quality, sound, light, thermal comfort, mind, community. And they set a more rigorous standard than the EPA does for indoor air quality and water quality. And so the district is planning to pursue, we're working with them on the well health safety rating, and so we will analyze any results that come from indoor air quality monitoring and testing against regulations like OSHA and the EPA and the Well Building Standard.
Thank you very much for the update. We look forward to learning more about the plan and the timeline and all the activities as you guys, I mean, we'll work with the right timing of getting updates planned over the summer and as the building becomes closer to opening.
Thank you, and thank you so much. It's a blessing and an honor to be here, and I'm really looking forward to working with you all and members of the community as well.
Thank you. We only have one staff report tonight, and it's our monthly financial and impact fee update, Ms. Lordo.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm presenting the monthly financial report for April, so we are 10 months into the fiscal year. As you can see from this, our total revenues were $211,644,858, and our expenditures were $185,149,650. So as we would expect, we are in positive cash flow at this point in our fiscal year of $26,495,208. We have collected 99.7% of our local taxes budgeted. That projecting out, I'm projecting that we will end the year with approximately $2.8 million over budget. So that comes into play with our year-end transfer requests that you will be considering. Vehicle tax collections for April were $1,885,000, and also there were some various state reimbursements that come in in April every year, such as the remaining 10% of property tax relief, which is Tier 1, homestead exemption, merchant's inventory, and manufacturer's depreciation. I did not see any other concerns regarding April. I'm glad to answer any questions, or we can move on to impact fees. We had a pretty big month with impact fees this time. We've collected to date $78,855,452. You probably saw that in May, we had nine homes, but we had 296 townhomes towards the beginning of May that were permitted. So we had one very large day of permits, $3,509,840 came in in one day on those townhomes. But to date cumulative on single-family units, we have had 2,903, and on multifamily, 2,141. So now we've gone over 5,000 units, we're at 5,044 total units. As I mentioned, we've collected $78.8 million, we've earned interest on those funds of $7.2 million, and we have submitted claims to York County for $72,415,000 towards Flint Hill Elementary and Flint Hill Middle School. So we are submitting those claims as soon as we pay those construction pay apps now toward these funds and drawing those down. Comparable data for single-family, we are very comparable 12 months rolling currently and 12 months a year ago, but now with this large collection on townhomes, our multifamily units, we are significantly higher, and we will be for some time, on the 12-month rolling. But May actual collections in total were $3,836,000 for this month.
Ms. Lordo?
Yes.
I know you don't create this list, but I'll just point out, I've counted several times, and I come up with a different number on single-family, it's 11, not 9.
For the total?
This is, there's some funky math going on.
Well, no, it's, because I was going to ask about, I think it's the first time I've seen this particular language where there's a demo involved. And so there is no fee because we're tearing it down and building another one in the same place, and so it's not really an additional unit.
That is in accordance with the York County ordinance, the way that they were.
I just had never seen it shown like that. That way before, but it makes sense that not adding students, if you had a house and you still got one house and...
What triggered me to even look at that was the miscount in their data for multifamily.
For multifamily?
The number of entries, not the...
They did, they did. And I haven't seen them do that before. So I did call, I did call and verify that, because I'm counting individual new doors, but they counted four lines.
Payments.
Payments, yes. But it was actually four buildings that were permitted. But I know exactly what you're talking about, because I saw that as well.
Out of curiosity, we have two that were under the old impact fee rate. Is there any indication as to what or why?
That means that the application process was already underway prior to the, I believe our date was April the 7th.
I don't know. I just know this says that it was...
April 8th. So the permit, the application was already underway and in process at the county on those.
If I was somebody that had those already in the system, and some of these others that we've seen for the last couple of months jumped ahead, I'd be a little irritated, I think.
I believe, because I had called and discussed that with them, and at the time that York County Council approved the new rates, I believe there are about a dozen in process, they told me, at that time. Okay? Any other questions about the monthly?
Budget and impact fees?
Okay.
Okay. So our first action item, Ms. Lordo can just stay up here, is to talk about the general fund budget, which she presented earlier. And I believe, I have to go back to the document, there's not an additional document.
So there's not additional document. So we're asking you to approve the proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 budget of $253,834,935 as presented during the public hearing, and this would require a millage increase of 20.2 mills for next year, prior to any rollback millage.
And it's also prior to confirmation from the state as to what the actual allocation will be because of some of the things that are still outstanding with the...
Correct. And I did, I inquired, had communications with the State Department of Ed Finance Office, and they shared with me that their hopes are to be able to send out those allocations by the end of this week. That generally means on Friday afternoons.
4:30.
Pretty much. But I would recommend to you that if we see additional dollars come through those allocations, which I'm hoping we do, it won't be anything significant. They had projected, if the charter school waiting had gone all the way down to .35, when they ran the reallocations, they projected we would pick up about $400,000. So if it's only going down to .5, I'm estimating it could be in the $150,000, $175,000 range. I am recommending to you that any additional dollars that come in from the final allocations that we reduce that 20.2 down a little bit. I just can't say, is that going to be another full mill?
It sounds like maybe a half mill or something.
Maybe a half mill. But I would recommend that you approve this budget to, say, a maximum of 20.2 mills, with any additional revenue would go towards reducing the tax impact, since we don't know.
Question, there's another action item we have down here. I wonder, does it impact this at all?
Yes.
That is the band fees.
It does.
The athletic and band fees.
It does impact this, because if you do not approve that, we would not be able to implement this, because this cost for increasing the stipends is dependent upon that additional revenue projection on the fee, the activity fees.
How many, crossing up topics, but they are tied together, how many mills does that line item reflect?
That line item?
1.2. It was 1.2, I thought.
The value of a mill is three, I'm using 360,000.
I thought it was like 400 and something. I thought the subs were roughly a mill and the athletic part was like 1.2.
Yes, it's right at a mill. Because the net increase in cost is 360,425.
Sorry, sorry. So the athletic funding that's on this budget sheet is roughly a mill?
Correct.
And then the sub increase is?
The 1.2.
Okay, I had it backwards.
But the line item for fees, if we do not pass that, if we do not increase that, how much does it increase the mills?
The...
That additional one that's sitting there at least.
It's in the last meeting.
Because it was like 90,000.
The total cost for the increase in stipends for high schools is projected at 300, I'm going to round the numbers, 350,000, and for middle school, it's 110,000. So roughly 460,000.
But I don't think that's the number he's looking for. I think what he's asking is the increase of $50 to the fee, what does that generate?
About 240,000.
So point seven, point eight, somewhere in there.
Correct. Let's say point eight.
Under a mill, because if that does not pass?
Correct.
Then there's that much less to spend towards this.
Towards this.
Okay. That's what I, is that what you're asking?
Yes, I'm having a hard time separating the two.
Yes.
One's contingent on the other.
It is.
And there's nothing that prevents us from talking about them all together, right? There's separate line items as far as approving, but we can ask questions about any budget-related item and, you know, to get them sort of synced up.
So I do have a few questions. Two weeks ago, the budget that you were presenting was 253... Was two hundred and fifty-three million four hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-five. And then today, it's two hundred and fifty-three million eight hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-five. And the only thing that we've added is our stipends, athletic band, elementary, middle. Um, but that's like a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase. And last time, on the twentieth, what, what I understood was that to make up the gap with fees. All we needed for coaching stipends was ninety-three thousand two hundred. And so I'm confused how coaching stipends got so much.
Sure, so those numbers were based on, um, adjusting the coaching stipends, um, an average of twenty-five percent across the board, per sport.
Yep.
Um, and then we went back and looked at, um, what would it take if we were able to get closer to the state averages per sport?
And that's.
And that's what generated the, yes, that's what generated the additional cost in that number. Is to, to increase our coaching stipend scale up to the, the state averages instead of just.
So.
Twenty-five percent.
When I looked at this, it looked like we went above those state averages for everybody under this new, yes?
I might need some help, Cory.
I didn't think that was the case.
Um.
No, I, I, it didn't look like that.
Well, uh, just a football coordinator, currently sixty-five hundred. The average is fifty-five seventy-six and the new proposed is eight thousand one hundred and twenty-five. Um, and tho, so, it looked to me like football coordinators, um, football assistant coaches, um.
Uh, oh, I think I can, I think I can help answer that.
Like they were already above the average, but we're bumping everybody.
So, we also looked at, um, we also looked at a methodology where we said, we don't want any coach. To make less than a certain amount. Because a lot of our spring sports and especially our assistant coaches in our spring sports were so low at like a thousand dollars. Um, and had been for many years. So, we looked at what if we went back and, um, re, reset this where no coach would make less than two thousand dollars? And that was our low point, and then we worked from that to make it reasonable based on, um, the number of athletes in that sport. The longevity of the season, um, the travel involved and things like that. Um, and these numbers are based on the recommendation of our athletic directors, um, with that criteria in mind. Um, but working from the standpoint of no coach would make less than two thousand, so we reached.
No high school coach.
No high school coach would make less than two thousand, so this scale was redeveloped since the last meeting based on those two things.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
But, but we're, we're no longer trying to get to the average, we're, we're okay with some things being above the average.
Yes.
And, and in some cases, pretty significantly above the average.
Based on trying to not have anyone under two thousand dollars for their sport. So we had a lot of coaches that were only at a thousand or fifteen hundred or eighteen hundred.
But we, but we're jumping everybody.
Well, we're working from that level up.
But I think the example you're giving is football where it wasn't a situation of being under two thousand, I think.
Football coordinators were already above.
Right, I think that's the example she's asking.
Above this average. I'm, I'm just curious how it got prioritized, I'm probably coming from a place of having my feelings hurt. Because I was an assistant cross-country coach and I'm looking at, well, what would I have made for? And it didn't look like it would have bought me a whole lot of groceries.
So, it's a little bit more complicated than just the, a comparison to another district. If you look at, and we were able to pull some additional contacts, so we were able to get to seventeen now. And it's all right around the same, every different district is different with how they do football especially. Some do days, which can change, some will add in, um, incentive pay, scale pay. Every single district that I pulled, not one was the same, some have lacrosse, some don't have lacrosse, some pay their assistant coaches at the varsity more than their JV. Some don't, some have, um, track, for example, has a boys and a girls track, we have one. So, when we looked at these stipends, we really looked at four things. We looked at A, we wanted to look at a, a tw, around a twenty-five percent because of the cost of living over the past couple of years. Also, we, what we've done for teachers, so we wanted to do around that, that was one aspect of it. The second aspect is we have two veteran ADs here with an extensive amount of insight, they understand the science of sports. How many kids there, the responsibilities that have been added on over the years. So, their insight on all these different coaching and what, what requires a little bit more and what doesn't. We then wanted to reset, um, and create these minimums that all of our coaches, assistant coaches, varsity coaches, girl sports, boy sports, track that has two aspects to it. That they were all kind of setting these minimums. And then we wanted to reset it as well, that we could compete within our state in some of these areas to maintain. And this is going across every district, every district is trying to reset their athletics to be competitive with one another right now. So really, there's four aspects and it's, I wish it was just, here's the state average, let's, let's match it. But every district was so different from each other, and I'm sure that's the same in a lot of the financial world. Um, and so again, if, it's not just one aspect, it's four of them, so I think we got caught up on saying, okay, twenty-five percent state average. These two very smart people, um, that have helped, so, but it's, all of it kind of blended together, we sat down and just kind of said, okay, what makes sense? We spent a whole day together, um, pulling these numbers and what we thought was fair. To really set, here's what we believe in Fort Mill, not what these other districts could do, we used it as research. But we set Fort Mill's anything what we felt comfortable, but of course, we're open to any feedback that you guys have for us.
I, I just wanted to understand.
Yeah.
How we got from ninety-something thousand two weeks ago to.
Right.
A, a lot bigger.
Right.
Now, um, because I had some sticker shock.
Yeah.
I, I don't have a problem with athletics, I think it's important.
Right.
Um, but we've been really reflective and all our superintendent candidates, when they talk to us about where they saw holes. It, it didn't look like we needed to throw a lot of money at athletics. You did a great job two weeks ago making me think, oh, you should throw some money that way. But, I'm not, I'm not sure it looked like it needed to be that much, so I'm just trying to get clear now, I'm not, I'm not fussing.
Yeah, and I, that, no, no, absolutely, and I'm open to feedback and happy to do, we're, it's, we're a big team, right? Trying to make this do right, I, I think I presented on, on the athletics side of it, very specifically.
Right.
Right, well, and that's from a budgeting standpoint, and I know what our history has been and I know, uh, the way we have framed worked different things. But we went from talking about increasing athletic stipends and fees for play to, pay to play, whatever. Um, and, and now it's added and grown legs with athletics banned, other stipends and, and other things. Again, not saying right, wrong, or otherwise, but that's lent itself to the sticker shock that you referenced.
And I think that was born out of the conversation we had that night, which was, how do we not get ourselves into a position where it's been ten years that, that we.
Right.
And we haven't looked at it? And, and so you guys went and did some additional research to say, okay, if we needed to do a reset, this is, this is what you would bring forward.
Yeah, I mean, just, just kind of speaking from, uh, yeah, pretty limited experience on the board. But I don't often hear us talk about averages being average, like that often, in anything that we do. In anybody that we compensate of anything, I, I, I feel no, no hesitation in, in getting, in, in getting this to, to, to an average. Or if some happen to be, oh, happen to be over an average, I mean, look at the, look at the, uh, the results. I mean, they, they kind of speak from, oh, we saw it tonight, right? Like it's, they're doing, they're doing exemplary work on a hundred bucks, a hundred, a hundred dollar stipend right now. And it's been that way for, for a long time. Um, you know, I, I just, I, I, for us in Fort Mill, I just feel like average really isn't a part of our, really not a part of our DNA. Uh, I wa, I want to see, I, I want to see us be above average on this stuff.
We'd like to be below average in cost.
Yes.
And above average.
Yes.
In results and in, and in pay.
And, and can, can we actually ask questions about the, the budget now? Okay.
I thought that's what we were doing.
I want to start doing that, well, we were on athletics for a moment. Uh, so Leon, I'm gonna hit up the, um, the history and projections slide here. Um, so, I, I, help me understand how, I, I'm looking at student, uh, the student enrollment number here.
On the one with the blue bars?
Yep, yep, yep.
H five.
Yeah, so, we're going from, I'll just start in twenty twenty-three, so seventeen thousand nine ninety-five, then we're jumping to eighteen thousand one fifty-eight. Then we hit eighteen thousand one eighty-eight, and then we're jumping to eighteen thousand six eighteen.
Right, remember, um, the, the eighteen thousand six eighteen is based on projected enrollment by school for next year. Um, the prior years are based on the average daily membership. Which your average daily membership's gonna be lower than your enrollment. So, um, funding is based on average daily membership. So, I always readjust the prior year on this to, to show what the final average daily membership. But at this point for next year, we don't know what the ADM is gonna be, so that's why that is higher.
Right.
Um.
So, if we have a flu outbreak.
Yeah.
We could have three hundred kids not in school on that ADM day and we just got tanked.
But, but here's a, some, some real data, if we, if we use eighteen five as our enrollment this year, if we'd been at eighteen five. Um, divided by the eighteen one eighty-eight, says we had, you know, roughly two percent absent on any given day. Right? I don't know how that plays into just normal days, but it's, it's a percentage of actual enrollees on any given day that are in the school being counted with a button seat.
Okay.
But I, um, I do the calculations for what I call the school budgets. Where each school receives the hundred and ten dollars per student, um, I do that based on the enrollment number. And so that's why I use it here, and that's why I make sure I have the dollars in the budget to cover what we are gonna give them, um, for their school budgets for next year.
Got it.
Does that help?
Yeah, 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 thank you, so, next thing is, I, I just want to give you just my perspective here on our subpay. So currently, we're at a hundred dollars a day.
Correct.
And we're, you know, and if this gets approved, we'll go to one sixteen a day. So I know on the surface, that could kind of seem like, well, sixteen dollars, right? Like, is that really worth it? But just, let's do a little public participation, who's ever had an hourly job before? You can raise your hand, right? If you're watching online, comment below, right? So, if you, just to put this in perspective, so currently, that would be fourteen twenty-nine an hour to work a seven-hour day at a hundred bucks a day. Did the math right before, so, you, you can test me. Um, now we would be moving to sixteen fifty-seven. So, I don't know if your boss ever came up to you and was like, hey, here's a two, here's over a two dollar an hour raise. Like, that's, that's, that's the, that's a really good hourly, hourly increase.
No doubt.
And so, for, for me, that, that, that says we're, that says we're prioritizing that. And we've already stated the need, I mean, Liza could tell you the need for, for, and do, do you feel like this would, this would help? Okay, so, for, for me, I'm, I'm a fan of that.
Yeah, I, I think that's one of the questions that I've heard as I've just sort of made my rounds is, the, do we believe that going to one sixteen will yield better results? Than the current ten percent gaps that we, that we have? And I don't know that because I don't know who individuals are that make up our subpopulation and whether the sixteen dollars a day will get them out of bed when they get that phone call or not, I, I just don't know.
Well, and, and to couple that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump back, this was before I was on the board, there was a, um, there, there was a, there was a eight, I think, I think, correct me if I'm wrong. But there was something where extra money was found where we could add, I think it was eight hundred dollars a year to, to the teacher pay. And it was just like, it, we're talking eight hundred dollars a, for the year, not a whole lot monthly, but got wild support. Because it was an increase to teacher pay. So, I, I guess I lo, I look at it kind of in, in a similar way, except this would be, I mean, in my opinion, this is more significant.
Four dollars a day for a teacher, just doing the math, right? When we did that, it was an extra four or five dollars a day.
Yeah.
This would be an extra sixteen a day.
Yeah, it's pretty significant.
And I think with this too, what we're trying to do, I don't know if a hundred and sixteen versus a hundred is going to make someone get out of bed to come work that day. But we are trying to make sure they don't go to one of our surrounding districts to sub.
Become a sub somewhere else.
If they want to sub that day, we want them to come here and sub that day.
Yeah.
That is a good answer.
That, that, that's a really good answer. All right, I, I, I've got a couple of questions, then I want to build on some things that, that people's. In the materials that you sent us today, can you tell me how we got the numbers? It, it's roughly sixty thousand, uh, that was allocated for the elementary and middle schools that asked to have a dedicated sub per school, like a floater? How, how that sixty thousand?
So, that was, um, that position, when we had our budget meetings with the elementary principals. Um, they discussed, um, having an additional support position in their front office could serve multiple purposes. That the elementary schools do not have anyone, they basically have a receptionist, a bookkeeper and a power school person. They do not have, the principal does not have an administrative assistant, um, position like we have at the high schools. Um, our three high schools have an administrative assistant position to the principal. So, the elementary level, we do not have that position. They said that person could also help, um, and serve as a daily sub if needed. If they got into a crunch and they needed to send them to help cover a class or for a couple of hours. They could also help, um, our bookkeepers are all on a seven-hour day work contract. Um, our high schools are on an eight-hour because they have a lot of late afternoon activities. But our elementary, middle school bookkeepers are on a seven-hour day contract. And the principals are saying, um, this person could also help maybe take a task or two off the bookkeeper. Um, so they could kind of serve three purposes. Um, and so this was, um, a support position that they were requesting for that reason. Um, now, when I put the cost with it, I try to estimate a support position, um, on that one, I may have not done a full two hundred and forty-day contract. But then I also have to add some of the fringe cost.
So, so it's like a standard, like one ninety classic position?
Correct, plus fringe cost for that position.
Okay. Um.
And that's just me saying, well, they might not need to be here all year.
Okay.
Or throughout the summer.
Second question, it's gonna be my broken record question, why are we leaving a mill on the table?
Um, my recommendation is that I, I'm very concerned about, well, this time next year, when, after opening an elementary school, we're gonna open a middle school. And then the next year, we're gonna open a four-year-old new program facility. That is gonna be very difficult to have three new schools in three back-to-back years. Um, at this point, my recommendation, I sent you the cost related to some of the items I had shared with you at a previous meeting. That had been discussed but didn't make category one or two priorities. Um, that is all position-related. I would recommend at this point that we not add additional, um, staff. Uh, we feel like, the administration feels like this is a very workable budget, it can meet our needs next year. Um, I would, I would recommend that we not add more staff to this because of that reason of what we're gonna be faced with down the road. And that we would have to then, we're committing to that. Where with sub-costs, stipends, those are things that, um, we would hope we never have to lower again. But if we had something very unusual happen with the state budget, those are things that aren't required by state law. That we could look at if we had to do some budget reductions, some unforeseen budget reductions. Where once we add additional teaching positions, I feel like we're committed to those, if that makes sense. That's my concern, I, I'm pretty sure in telling you, I would stand here next year and ask you to pick up that additional mill. Because I think we're gonna need it, when, to, to open, and the elementary school cost us now three point four million dollars. I think we will be in excess of four point eight to five mil. I think we will be in excess of four point eight to five million to open Flint Hill Middle School based on where we were when we opened Forest Creek Middle School.
And when I asked Leanne a similar kind of question, we were talking about the, the good news is, along with the charter school allocation, I think we got agreement to form a task force to look at the allocation methodology.
Yes.
And while Leanne was very encouraged by that, the pessimist in me said, we've never come out ahead.
Never.
When they've done a look at the allocation methodology. And so it worries me greatly, as much as I want them to do the allocation because I hope that it will, the light will go off, that our numbers are out of whack. I have concerns that it could go against us unfortunately because we're such an outlier in the state.
And even their hold harmless didn't hold harmless the way it was intended.
And I think it's a good point to point out. I appreciate that you start every budget conversation with something very admirable in the way that you talk about the state, right? Because the state doesn't do us any favors, right? You started by saying, funding is not favorable.
Right.
Which is an understatement.
It is an understatement.
And what we're testing with doing, and I want to build on what Lippy said. You know, we went through a very reflective practice over the last month. And we had every candidate tell us about what we're not doing even average. And that's some of our subgroups. And I'm concerned that we are not looking at some positions that I see. And I see elementary, middle school principals out there. I'm not suggesting that this is what we should fund, but I'm going to use it as an example. I see three interventionists as a number-one priority for our high school principals. To me, the sky is always falling with the state. We battle it every year. Nine straight years, we talk about the sky is falling with the state and the budget. We've opened seven, next year will be our seventh school that we have to talk about opening since I've been on the board. We find a way to do it. I would hate to leave money on the table when we have tangible ways that we feel like we can close those achievement gaps and we're not funding it right now. That is my concern. And that's why I just don't believe in leaving money on the table. I feel like we're charged with making a difference now for this upcoming school year. And are we doing that with this budget? I don't have the answer to that. If I did, I'd probably write a book and make a lot of money. But I think we need to maybe take some time and look and say, are there any other positions in that reflective practice from an education, that align with our strategic plan that we can make a difference in some of their subgroups? That every single candidate, every outsider was able to easily pull the data and look and say, this is a struggle for Fort Mill. How are we addressing that? And is it being addressed in this budget adequately?
On that note, I've got to say props to special services for what you sent us about their budget request. Oh, girl, it was like having learning objectives up on the board. It means this strategic plan right here and this goal, it was really.
Well, that's why I wanted to share that, some of those detailed department requests. The level of detail they go to, what you see on my, what I call the master spreadsheet is very summarized and totals, and I want you to see some of those details. And that's why I shared that with you. And just so everyone watching, just as a reminder, we did not have to increase teacher pay this year or for next year because we are already at the state minimum. And anytime you're already at the state minimum, you do not have to increase teacher pay. Even though the state increased fifteen hundred dollars to the state minimum, since we were already at fifty thousand starting, we could have elected not to increase teacher pay. But you are, we felt like we wanted to propose that to you because we think that is critically important, is trying to stay as competitive as we can with teacher pay. And so going up the twenty-five hundred is an additional thousand dollars over what the state minimum teacher pay increase is for next year as well.
And for those keeping track at home, the state budget does not fund fully that fifteen that they're migrating.
That's where a large majority of the increase in cost and the necessary millage comes from is funding that additional teacher salary increase for next year.
And the four percent.
And the four percent cost of living for all employees. Because we have always here felt like it was important that all employee groups received a cost of living as much as we could to match the teacher pay scale cost of living increase.
So two more points on the coaching. I would, Ms. Houston, one of them is going to go to you, the next one. But so not to get into back and forth, but I would say the quality of our coaches absolutely affect our subgroups. Because many of them take part in those, in those sports. And it absolutely can affect, it absolutely can have a major role on actual grades. The quality of coaches, I mean, that's part of it. But Ms. Houston, so if our stipends go to one hundred and fifty dollars, well, I'll start here. How many kids are rejected of playing sports in Fort Mill schools because they can't pay the stipend?
It's an athletic fee, not a stipend.
Sorry, because they can't pay the athletic fee?
Zero.
Zero.
None.
How many kids, so I have five. All right, this is going to be an expensive thing for the Helms household. But so how many kids are going to be rejected from playing sports in Fort Mill schools if it goes to a hundred and fifty dollars?
Zero.
Zero.
So our athletic directors work with our families. And if there is a financial concern, our families are encouraged to set up a meeting and meet with our athletic directors. And then they work with their school or their athletic booster club to cover the fee for those students.
Thank you.
Anything at this end of the table?
Absolutely. I was intensely quiet letting everyone go. All right, so I'm going to start off by saying wonderful job on this. This cannot be trying to please a seven. And we all got wonderful ideas and all those things. And before I forget, because I think, I thank Vice Chair Pratt and Dr. Fred O'Leary for the reminder that we have been discussing the subgroups. And I have been one that has been, that's been on my heart because it's such a big deal. And I think we certainly have some schools in our district that certainly needs even more TLC. Just wanted to mention that. Some question I have is, so I've been on the board since 2020, elected in 2020. And I'm going to say the first budget I voted on may have been somewhere between one fifty and one sixty, a hundred and sixty million, somewhere around there. And so you're suggesting two hundred and fifty-four billion dollars roughly. And I see here that basically from 2020 or 2022 to 2026, there's roughly maybe a thousand student increase with about a hundred million dollars or between eight and a hundred million dollars. Can you give some context on today, what that really means? That two hundred and fifty-four on that nineteen thousand or eighteen six, like what does that really mean?
So I think there's a couple of key things that are factored into this. One is in that timeframe, the number of new schools we have built and opened. And as we've mentioned here tonight, anytime you open a new school, it's the staffing of that school, it's also just the facility cost, the annual operational facility cost of that school. So we've had a tremendous impact on the budget over a very short period for the number of schools that we've had to open. And that's clear, I talk about our debt level. We're a district that has a high debt level because we have been in the situation of having to open so many schools so quickly. I think too, most budget years that I can recall, we have always prioritized the number of new classroom teachers that we need to maintain, we say, a reasonable class sizes. We've seen our class sizes creep up just a little bit. We've had to because of our growth and our funding. But I remember several budgets during this period where we added fifty, sixty-plus new classroom teachers, then additional special ed teachers in those budget years. And so we have seen just the cost increases, teacher pay and the fringe benefit cost related to teacher pay have gone up as we've added that many teachers every year during these budget years and tried to keep those class sizes reasonable for our students. I think those have been the two largest impacts on these budget years for us.
So what would be, go ahead.
Well, I want to clarify one thing because you talk about the impact of the positions for opening a school. And I'm not sure that everybody understands because it's not because of the classroom teachers necessarily. The growth, regardless of where the growth is, the growth is what determines how many more classroom teachers. The problem, if you will, is that now you need another nurse, another media specialist, another.
Guidance counselor.
Music teacher, all the other things besides the classroom. Those are the thirty-five, cafeteria manager, all those things. That's the thirty-ish.
Yes, and what I'm also really seeing is I looked at the list of the thirty-five positions for Flint Hill Elementary. All the additional services we have started providing for students related to special ed, mental health counselors, having a school psychologist, behavior interventionist, registered behavior technician at every school. All of those positions that we now add when we open a new school has a significant budget impact on these numbers as well. And those positions largely make up the thirty-five new positions needed for Flint Hill Elementary School.
Which is three to five million dollars, right?
Correct.
Just for that subset.
Rounded, right, three point four million dollars. And related arts positions.
Right.
We have to have all the related arts positions because those cannot come from another elementary school.
What would be the, today, the student to teacher ratio? What, Dr. Wakeston, do you know that?
Could y'all share?
Yeah, so we polled that for, it's different by level, of course, but elementary projection for next year will be nineteen and a half to one. Middle school is twenty-one to one. And high school, twenty-eight to one. And I would put a big caveat with high school because it's so dependent on the class. Sometimes an honors level class or AP class might have more students than that. And then you have some classes like an auto tech four that might have six students in it. Or, you know, all the different specialized CTE elective programs at the high school. So high school is really hard to pinpoint what the average is, but we would say about twenty-eight to one, maybe twenty-nine to one, depending on the class.
And do we believe that that's grown significantly, let's say, the last two years, the last three?
I would say significantly. I think it has crept up by a couple of students. I don't know exactly the.
I actually think that's low on the elementary side. I see a lot of twenty-ones and twenty-twos. We used to monitor that sheet all the time.
We've got it in our reports.
Right, right.
And I would say overall, that's still very low. Like, if you looked across the state at class size averages, that's extremely low and favorable.
Wow, got you. Okay, great. Thank you for that. Next question, so you refer to staying in compliance with the state and the ratio. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure, that has to do with some things like guidance counselors. State law, you are supposed to have a ratio of, is it four or five hundred students per guidance counselor?
Well, there's, do you remember that offhand? It's about three hundred, they recommend. And then I think there's also a state law that's about four hundred maybe by level.
Three hundred to one is the ASCA, which is their governing body. It's not law for us, but it is the recommendation.
Yeah, so the recommendation is three hundred to one from their governing body. And I think the state has it set a little bit higher that you are required to be under.
Right, I think the state's four fifty.
Yeah, and that's high, you know, for a counselor to have that many kids to do effective job of counseling students, of course.
Another one here, which we say sometimes, but I want you to be with the public a little bit more clear on this. Fort Mill School Board, or I'm sorry, Fort Mill School District, lowest poverty rate in the state. Can you give?
So that is based on the number of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. And we, right now, average eighteen, nineteen percent of our student population qualifies for free and reduced lunch. There are a good many school districts now that are under a federal provision called community eligibility where I believe the threshold is sixty percent. If sixty percent of your students qualify for free and reduced, then you can apply and become a community eligibility-approved district and all students would eat for free. Rock Hill has done that. So we are very low at eighteen to nineteen percent poverty or free and reduced lunch count. We are the lowest in the state.
I mean, and that goes to part of what Dr. Fred O'Leary was asking about earlier with some of our subgroups, right? We, because we still have those eighteen to nineteen percent, but we don't get significant funding for additional resources because it's such a small, small number.
We get the lowest amount, if you recall, when we had ESER funding during COVID, we received the lowest amount of ESER funding over that three-year period than any district in South Carolina. We receive the lowest amount of Title I funding. Any funding like that, that is based on your poverty percentage, we receive the lowest amount of funding for that reason.
Okay, and I want to give a shout out to Coach Lewis, Coach Hartso, Coach Dillon on a very successful high school athletic year. There's a lot of success that took place. And I also want to compliment our middle school and our coaches that are very involved and in the trenches and making a difference. I also want to thank you and congratulate Director Linkus, Director Butler, and Patel that have welcomed me to visit their band practices and allow me to stand next to them and see through their lens on the challenges and the satisfaction and gratification that comes from that. And they've welcomed me with open arms. And so I'm just appreciative of everyone that's involved with that. So I just wanted to kind of share that with you all. And I'm a huge supporter of the stipends. And this is a part of continuing to be the best version of ourselves. But the subgroup part of it, which I can't waver from, which has been a big deal for me and I've been saying it for the past few years, that is still part of my heart because that's another part of how we can become the best version of ourselves. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Other questions, conversation? Does anyone have a motion?
Still, I'm still wrestling. So I guess, and I think in part, you know, May is always a very busy month in education. Y'all know that. You sit here, you do it day in, day out. You eat, breathe, live, sleep. We kind of just eat and breathe now and again, sort of, not really. I mean, it's ongoing all the time. But May was a very pivotal and a very extra month for us as a board with superintendent search and the process that went along with that. And then it's all the excitement with retirement celebrations and Teacher of the Year celebrations and Support Staff of the Year. And then it's graduations and that's the culmination and the highlight for everybody. And I just feel like that, for me personally, I don't feel like I've given enough dedicated, in-depth. Every time I start asking questions and get answers and information, it leads to another question and then another, and a what-if. And I guess I struggle with, are we fully encompassing all of our needs? And have we answered all of the what-ifs to proceed with approving a budget tonight versus continuing to refine and ask those questions and get additional answers and feel like that we've had the opportunity to truly do our due diligence and ask all of the questions that feed into it.
So let me take a stab at where I think, where I think everybody is. Unless you guys correct me, I don't believe there's any question about the eighteen mills that were presented for the priority ones. I think where we, where there's a lot of different perspectives of what's the highest and best use of the remaining potential three point two? Is it spend it? Is it save it? Is it? Is it spend some of it on athletics and some on subs, right? And there's, I think there's some flavors in between there that, to Michelle's point, we haven't taken as much time this year as we would have normally during the month of May to arm wrestle about some of those pros and cons and which one has the highest and best use. But I don't think there's any question about the eighteen mils.
Agreed.
So if there is a desire to continue to arm wrestle over about a million dollars, because that's what we're really talking about in the remaining three mils, could we, should we at least go ahead and move forward knowing that we are in agreement on the eighteen mils that allows, I think, the district to set the salary schedules and all of those things? And then we always have an if-needed meeting in June that we could come back and make a final decision on how much and for what we would spend of the potential three point two left. That would be my suggestion based on where I think everybody is.
I'm good with that.
I would entertain a motion.
Watch this, Michelle. I would like to make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the administration for all of category one and come back to discuss category two in two weeks-ish.
On the seventeenth.
Well, maybe, in a couple of weeks.
Because I think some people have a big meeting.
Everybody's gone.
Yeah, we'll have to look at the schedules.
Probably look at the last week in June.
I'll second it so we can have discussion about the date.
Okay, let's have some discussion. Well, and we can settle on the date at some other time. We don't have to do that here. But I think we've got a motion and a second to approve the, I don't know that I can do an actual number, but the
Can I give you the actual number?
Yeah, you can.
Eighteen million, eight hundred sixteen thousand, six hundred
It would be, so you would be tonight approving a budget of two hundred and fifty-three million, forty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. Two hundred and fifty-three million, forty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Which would require
Which covers category one and requires eighteen mil increase.
Okay, so I think we have a motion and a second.
Two five three oh four two nine three five.
I think we have a motion and a second to approve a budget tonight that includes two hundred and fifty-three million, forty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars, which would be an eighteen mil increase and cover all of the category one priority items.
Correct.
With the intent to come back by the end of the month to make a determination on what if anything would be approved of the remaining three point two potential mils.
Correct.
Will we know then if we will have additional money?
Yes, I would, I say yes, we should. We should.
Could spend.
Yes.
A hundred dollars of it.
Makes a difference now.
Any further discussion on that item, on that motion?
The only concern that I have, and we've discussed this previously as well, the only concern that I have with that is that I think our community doesn't always appreciate that we come back and adjust after the fact.
I think it's just important, though, for us right now, our teachers are somewhat waiting to know and our employees, what's going to happen with their salary scales next year.
Sure.
And we don't publish our salary scales until you have approved the budget.
But it doesn't go into effect until July first.
It doesn't, but I think two weeks can make a huge amount of time when we've got positions unfilled that we're trying to recruit people for.
Or we know what we're paying today for those positions.
We do, we do. And that's what Liza and I were talking about this afternoon. I mean, she shares with them currently.
Right.
And telling them, you know, we're hoping it will be a little higher. But that's what's important to us is that if you're comfortable with category one, we would appreciate approving a budget with that so that we could start that process moving forward more formally for our employees.
This would just be how we frame it. This could be budget vote one of two.
We're gonna do something. It's not an adjustment. We're gonna do something else.
Right, right.
Just to what extent.
What information, if any, would you want us to gather for you during this period? Or is this just a matter of you all discussing it further at the next meeting?
I would be curious how many coaching vacancies we ended up with this year or how many coaches left over the past few years saying peace out because I can make more across the river or whatever. I'm curious about how the middle school coaching stipends were structured. I looked at them, I looked at them, and it looked to me like the middle school principals had prioritized coaches a little higher than the high school principals, although we got some answers to that question.
Yes.
It sounded like it just happened organically. But it looked like their move towards the middle or the above average was not the same amount. So I'm, a hundred percent, I'm not fussing. I'm curious how these decisions were made, and I don't think I have clarity on how those decisions were made. And I would love to know, like, what it might look like to put a permanent sub maybe in some of those schools that on that priority list really said they could use that. If we were gonna go big or go home, like Dr. Frater always wants to do. I'd like to know some numbers behind it, just so I know what I'm saying no to
Sure.
and why I'm saying yes.
So I know the sub issue off the top of my head because we looked at if we added that support position, it would be for all elementary and all middle schools. And it was about eight hundred and eighty thousand, just to give you some idea. I think it was eight hundred and eighty-three thousand.
But I think we got, or there were, I saw from Ms. Hartley, I think, how many schools had unfilled, like their number of unfilled. And it looked like, and I eyeballed it fast. Because really, I just, I didn't look at this until just yesterday. But I eyeballed it fast, and it looked like middle school is where they have some trouble getting people that want to come for a hundred dollars a day.
It was middle and high. Elementary was up in the mid-nineties.
Yeah.
And middle and high were in the mid-eighties.
And then I wondered, is that special, like, how many of those vacancies are special ed classes? It looked like OGA maybe had a higher number. Is it because, so I'm just curious, like
Yeah, she actually, I asked Sheri that question. She shared with me that she didn't know the exact number, but she said, yes, a lot of our vacancies are related. She can't really pull that data. It's not coded that way in the subsystem, but she said, yes, a large majority of our vacancies each day are related to special ed classes.
Well, and on one of our priority areas was adding the special ed coaches at the middle school level, which I think is critical. We saw huge leaps and bounds with that with the elementary.
They're very excited about those positions.
Though, is those people that will go into those coaching roles are current sped classroom teachers. So we've just created a bigger void by trying to do a good thing.
We are backfilling, but that was why, if you remember, Dr. Mazziar's asked you to go ahead and approve those early on.
Right.
I think you approved those back in February, early March.
Yes.
And so those people have been hired. I don't know where we stand with the backfill for the current special ed vacancies. How many of those are related to specifically to those middle school instructional coach positions? But that's why they started that process so that they had the spring to fill those special ed teacher slots for the internal shift to the instructional coach positions.
I think the one thing that I would want to see is just, after seeing the prioritized lists of what the administrators sort of presented, just conversations, and I don't want the answer tonight. This is conversations that I think district admin needs to have with principals. Because I asked the question when we got the email today. Is this a true prioritized rank? And sort of, I got a couple of different answers that, for instance, high school principals knew that student services was going to come forward with the recommendation for stipends. Are they comfortable with the fact that that recommendation came forward instead of their number one recommendation of an interventionist at each high school?
Right.
Right? I don't know the answer to that, and I don't need to know the answer tonight, but has that discussion been had with them? Right? Is that a prioritization that our building-level principals feel comfortable with? And I think it's on you guys to figure out how does this all align and what's most important. I just, I want to make sure those conversations have been had and that we're making sure that we're making the differences in the right places where we can afford to. Because I think I'm the only one that's gonna vote that wants to go all out, right? And I understand that. And I'm not gonna stop progress if the rest of the board doesn't agree to that full increase. Still think we should do it, but I just want to make sure that we are putting resources and making a difference right now with the money that we can do.
Sure, okay.
So what I think, what I think the request is, is I'd say take a week. Right, spend next week gathering data, subs, athletic priorities, you know, all of the things that would help us have a better understanding of it. And then, because it's gonna be at least two weeks before we can find a time that works, and we'll come back together to make a decision specifically on the potential for the three point two plus whatever money you've learned is now available from the state. Think that's what is being proposed and discussed.
Agreed.
Any further discussion? Okay, so I'm gonna try it one more time to make sure. So all those in favor of a current round one approval for two hundred and fifty-three million, forty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars, which translates into an eighteen mil increase, knowing that there are three point two mils plus potential additional dollars available that we would make a decision on by the end of the month. All those in favor of that motion and second signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's all we got for now. And we'll figure out a time. We'll compare calendars and figure out when we can do that. But take a week or so and put together some analysis.
Well, and I feel sure that we will go back and do some refining in our minds of what additional questions, and we'll get them to you in terms of
Yes.
That would be most helpful, yeah. Make sure we have everything covered that
Because it was, I mean, some of this was weekend kind of stuff, and it's just because everybody's been running ninety miles a minute.
Sure.
Okay, I've lost my place. We also have an action item for the approval of a year-end transfer.
Yes, so at the last board meeting, I presented the year-end transfer request. There have been a few changes since that request. I removed the coaching and band director stipends because those went on the general fund operating budget request. I added fifty thousand dollars for curriculum for teacher professional development, which was on the year-end list last year, as well as twenty-five thousand for steam funding because those two items have not made it into the curriculum recurring budget. We used to have a long list of those curriculum items, and we have worked to get the majority into the recurring budget, but these two items have not made it on the recurring budget. But this includes the funding for the media center collections, the school small capital purchases, a new project for digital student record scanning, the new classroom setup, the middle school athletics equipment replacement of sixty thousand, the curriculum items, the hundred and six thousand to go towards the Western York County agricultural arena that is under construction. And then you all asked to include an additional item for the superintendent's first-year forward initiatives and then two point eight million to the contingency fund. So the total is three million, six hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars that we request an approval for the year-end transfer.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the administration for a year-end transfer in the amount of three million, six hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a year-end transfer of three million, six hundred and twenty, four forty-seven. I think it's probably important to clarify one item on there that we've never talked about before. It's this thing called the superintendent first-year forward initiatives. And I should let Dr. Frater really talk about it because he was the one that had the brilliant idea to include it.
Well, I think we had, and to be completely transparent, BWP was first, when we first met with them. This is something that they had talked about happening in another district. Not in the same light, but when we kind of looked at it, and I suggested it, we heard a lot of great things from Mr. Young in his presentation about things that he wanted to do to help make a difference. And in thinking the conversation that we had with BWP, I thought, there's gotta be a way that we can ensure that he's got a little bit of money, that things that are passionate, that he's passionate about and making change and doing some things to sort of make his mark as a first-year superintendent, that he have the ability to do that, so. We had talked about a one-time allocation to allow him to do that.
And then we're gonna have show and tell.
That's right.
And then I would like to comment, one of the things that struck me, going back to Mr. Young saying that he wanted to be a transformational superintendent. But one of the things I meant to mention a couple of weeks ago was, which I thought was very impressive, was as we are, or have been ranked one hundred and forty-ninth out of ten thousand, three hundred school districts around the country, Gray decided to pick up the phone and call a couple of school districts. And so he called one in Illinois and he called one somewhere else, and they were both in the top one hundred. And for me, I thought that was very favorable of someone who has those thoughts and is believing that there's more than just room to improve, but to understand what may be additional secret sauces that have made other K through twelve is very successful. So I just wanted to piggyback on that.
And we did, we heard, you know, that was one of the questions we asked in our interviews. Okay, you know, what do you see our challenges? What do you, if you had, if you took the role, what would you do? And Gray had some great answers. So did some of the other candidates. And so we just heard things that, you know, hey, there's some neat ideas.
And also in full transparency, because children do have amazing ideas.
Yeah.
We actually heard this question at Fort Mill Elementary School to one of the candidates. One of the children asked, if you had fifty thousand dollars to do whatever you wanted with, what would you use it for? So.
That's a good question.
It was a great question, so that kind of spun around a little bit.
The kid literally flipped out whenever
That was actually the answer. The kid literally, his jaw dropped. I mean, his jaw completely dropped. He was like, that's what I had!
I would say, Gray, tell them every year you want the hundred thousand. Equally, it's first year improvement.
That's why it's called first year forward, because we could be something that wasn't just a quick fix.
Scott pulled us over on that one, all right?
All right, so motion and a second to approve the year-end transfer. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. But you're not done yet.
So I'm not sure where we stand with this one, but we are proposing an increase in the activity fee, which is athletic and band fees, from a hundred dollars to a hundred and fifty dollars. We have not increased the, I sent in my memo to you over ten years, but they shared with me, they think it's been more like fourteen, fifteen years. That it has been the hundred dollars. For middle schools, this proposal would be that the first two sports, an athlete would pay the hundred and fifty, and if they play a third sport, there would be no cost. It would be free. And that's to encourage more athletes at that age. They will be trying different sports. So there will be Um, so there will be, um, more three-sport athletes. When you get to high school, generally, they play one or two sports. Um, and so for high school, they would pay the hundred and fifty per sport, but for middle school, we would have the third sport free for next year. So, our recommendation is to increase the fee to a hundred and fifty dollars for next year.
And, and I'll just say this, regardless of what ends up happening with the other three mils, um, it, to me, it is, it is evident that the cost of buses, um, transportation has gone up, the cost of, of, the stipends need to be increased, again, to what level, but there is no question that, that athletics have gotten more expensive in the last however many years it's been, whether it's been five or ten, it's still, you know, been a lot. So, I think we can still wrestle about potentially the, 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 the degree. But if I understood this correctly, this would, at a minimum, give some, the funding to, to increase the stipends to a certain degree.
Correct, correct, but you're, you're correct. I mean, we're still somewhat operating at a deficit.
Right.
Um, with high school because of the transportation, security, referee cost, officials' cost for all the sports, and we track it all completely separately from the general fund. Um, and it's just the continued inflationary increases in those costs.
I understand the increases and the reason it's such a significant jump now, because it has been some number of years.
Correct.
I do have a lot of heartburn about such a big jump regardless. So, not real sure where I stand just yet.
I think going forward, as I mentioned, um, you know, we're committed to looking at these stipend schedules annually, if we need to do some type of cost of living increase. Um, and also, we would probably recommend that we look at this fee amount annually, um, and not wait so long, um, cause we're somewhat behind on this with covering the cost.
And so what you're saying is make smaller jumps, potentially?
Absolutely, yes.
If needed.
If needed, if needed, and that would be certainly based on our number of athletes and the actual, we'll look at the actual cost from year to year.
There is a cost of doing business.
Yep.
Yes.
Shouldn't be losing money.
Right.
Uh, in, in, in operating that.
Yes.
The, the thing that gives me comfort is, uh, cause I have seen it, and, and, um, there are some teams that have a lot of them, um, but the booster clubs have, have always found a way to step up so that the, the students didn't suffer, um, the difference between a hundred and a hundred and fifty. Um, it, it, it's a big percentage increase, it's, it's fifty dollars, and I, I feel.
But if it was five dollars a year for the last ten years.
Yeah.
That's right.
It's not.
That's right.
I was just saying, I, I believe we will find a way to cover the extra fifty if, if that becomes the, the determinant between someone being able to play or not, so.
Right.
Yet we would never keep them.
Right, right.
Right.
It's like a sticker shop.
It is, it is.
Yep. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the administration to in, increase the athletic and band fees from the current amount of a hundred dollars per sport or band, cause it's not a sport, however we want to call that, to a hundred and fifty dollars effective with the school year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to increase the athletic and band fees from one hundred to one fifty, uh, for the coming year. Any further discussion?
The only other thing I would add, um, and, and I know a few of us have talked about this, um, I think that we have to recognize band as one and athletics as one. Um, we have always kind of done the, the mirror, and, and I just don't, personally, having had athletes, not athletes, banned, the rest of it, um, there's a very big difference in managing full contact and concussions and broken compound fractures and things of that nature than there is getting smacked in the mouth with a trombone or otherwise. Not that they're not both dangerous, but the level of intensity is very different, and if we want to talk about summer weather and heat stroke and things of that nature, well, no one side is more or less, because we're all out in it, so.
And I will add to it that I, I don't, I don't, I, I think if band decided to approach us and give a presentation on the need of something, I don't think there's a reason why athletics should feel like they need to do that or vice versa. So, I, I truly believe that any given time that there's a need, you state the need, and you've come before the board, I don't, I, I don't, I, I, that, that's my take on that, so.
Yeah, so, so going forward, I think we should, we should treat them independently, they all have their, their merits for the record, I broke my nose in band with my flag.
Hit with the trombone?
It can't happen. But we shouldn't just automatically assume they're the same.
But a majority of this fee, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with this being in line, and if we raise this fee another ten dollars next year, doing it for both, because this is, this is about offsetting overhead costs.
Correct.
Buses, and, and that affects all participation, right? So.
I, I, Scott, so I agree with you on that, but it shouldn't be presented the other way, so that's the difference, is how it's presented. So, but I think at the end of the day, what you're stating, I'm in agreement with that.
You're saying present together? No.
No, no, no.
We, we, we got it, we had a very long conversation about athletics, um, that sort of precipitated some of this discussion, that, I think that's your point, and we just.
But, okay.
But I'm not.
Was band invited to come make an equal presentation?
I don't know that.
Right, exactly.
And that's really the point.
I mean, that's, all I'm saying is, I, I, I think this is a standard fee, a, a participation fee that, that is to cover overhead, so if it's for one, it's the other, I'm fine with it both ways.
Let me, let me just make a statement, I've, I've been doing this a long time. I, I hope we never get, Fort Mill's a special place for a lot of children. I hope we never pit band against athletics, or we want to do what's, we want to be topping all programs, so I agree with Scott on this issue, whether one, one, we do treat them together because of that, I believe, because so many people are affected and lives are impacted and improved, so I would just urge the board to never, I, I understand the one-to-one, but, and they, and they're different, but they're, they're, at the end of the day, it's a family we have here, and we want every child to succeed, band, athletics, we, uh, the, the whole, every, every child, so I would hope you wouldn't ever get to that, that kind, and that's the, the feeling I have on the one-to-one, it may be a little, we work harder than they do, they work, I, I think it's important, parents come here because of the band program, they come here because of athletics, it's a, it's a total quality that we want to be best in everything, I believe, as a district, not just, not single out, just for what it's worth, cause I'll go out the door.
I, I think we're, we're just talking, like, there's a difference between track and soccer and softball and football and band, and, and they're, you know, just like the stipends and all that, they should all, they, they should all be considered for what is needed for each of the programs, not to pit them against each other by any stretch.
But if you did one and not the other, you, you would pit them against each other in the, in the reality, was my, would be my fear. I can be honest.
Yes, you can, yes, you can. Any other discussion? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we have one more approval, and it's not Leanne's. That's Sroggs.
Hey, good evening, I, uh, was hoping to beat the nine o'clock hour, I'd have to be really quick to do that. Um, but for, I want to say one thing on the record, uh, as well to start off with, I said from the, the cheap seats over here, three hundred to ones, uh, ASCA actually recommends two fifty to one, so I don't, the counselors would hold me accountable for that extra fifty, so I just want to put that out there, that, that's the recommendation from their governing agency. All right, good evening, esteemed board members, my, uh, role tonight is to bring some new courses, I tried to spice it up and make it a little bit different, so we didn't rehash the same thing, uh, but this evening, we're gonna talk about new dual enrollment in a different, uh, venue than we have previously used before. So, USEL is one of our articulation partners, we've used them for quite some time, um, they have two models, one where they have provided us an instructor of record model, that means that our Fort Mill High School, or excuse me, Fort Mill School District teacher, uh, meets their adjunct professor status, that's usually thirty hours at the master's level or a master's in the content area. It has to be pretty specific, so for instance, a science teacher who has a biology master's could only teach biology courses, not necessarily help out with physics dual credit or anything like that, which has made it quite difficult to find our instructors that have a content-specific master's, uh, forensic science, we were very lucky to have two in the entire district that met the chemistry requirements to teach the forensic science classes for us. Another model we use more commonly is a facilitator model, where there's a professor of record at USEL who collaborates with one of our instructors, and basically, that person puts in the grades for our classes. So, our teacher administers the quizzes and the tests and the daily instruction, but ultimately, they are not the professor of record, their record is kind of emailed off to a professor at USEL who enters it for them, and they have the final say on all things grading, on all things quizzes and tests, and kind of direct the instruction, although our folks use their expertise to fill in the day-to-day. That's how we've operated for, uh, as lo- as long as I have worked with the dual enrollment programs, even from my time as an assistant principal. What has come about is Indianland campus for USEL is open, right, uh, right across, uh, Sugar Creek there, not far from Catawba Ridge High School at all, and we heard, uh, I heard specifically from the USEL folks that they are giving this opportunity to the Indianland students, and wanted to also offer that opportunity for our students to take some classes on their campus, um, in addition to what they facilitate through those other two models. This would be a USEL professor working with our students at this campus. It is formerly, uh, Indianland High School's auto tech program, basically, when they built the new, new high school, they completely, uh, gutted the auto tech area, poured concrete floors, nice bathrooms, it's, it's a nice facility, but it's only a three-room classroom that's out there, very large, and they're able to handle most general education classes. I point that out to say, you know, if you had a very, uh, chemistry class, they may not be able to do the lab, because they don't have gas hookups, they have a sink, but not sink stations everywhere, but you could have social studies, English, and, and some specialized sciences, they could even do biology with some kits to have some biology classes for our students. Um, they want to long-term pick classes that Fort Mill School District selects that would be a lure for us, but our timing for this coming fall is kind of predicated on what they have already signed professors up for, for the Indianland students, so while we had conversations about where we would like to see this program go, and what we would like to offer, this coming fall, we kind of had to take what they're already offering to the Indianland students as the opportunities on the table for our kids. So, uh, these classes that they're offering qualify as Carolina Core, referring to USC, like Columbia, the Carolina Core, are basically gen ed requirements that have broad transferability. All the classes that we have researched, um, I told them the schools that our students typically go to, and the greatest numbers that are four-year universities, Clemson, Carolina, Coastal Carolina, College Charleston, Winthrop, and all of them have the classes that we're proposing as articulable credits at these universities, so they can take it and bank on it that USC stands behind it, saying, this is a gen ed requirement, it's Carolina Core, you can take this certainly to the Carolina system, but also throughout those other major state schools. Um, what it would look like in the fall would be four days a week at nine-thirty to ten-forty-five, so this is kind of falling across first and second blocks at the high school. Students would attend classes Monday, Wednesday for their first class, and Tuesday, Thursday for their second. They're getting a real college experience off-campus with real instructors, uh, I say real instructors, real professors, and just like in college, Monday, Wednesday classes aren't always Monday, Wednesday, Friday, if they're long enough, we would not have Friday classes for these students. That's a, another layer of, I don't want to say complexity, but it, but it's a factor at play for the right student, that this is an opportunity that matches both their desire for that real college experience, as well as some maturity piece for who we think will be successful in these classes. Because on Fridays, they would work on the work and be able to attend their professor's office hours if they had additional questions, they, even if they were transportation, not able to get there, they could zoom with their, their professors, because that's become a, a commonality now. Uh, students would return to their high school, so they'll have time to leave at ten-forty-five and get back for third and fourth block. We are dealing with seniors, so it could even be possible, we have a scenario where we have two classes at USEL, like, uh, Indianland, third block on campus and fourth block free, um, but I mean, that's just up to the individual student and their needs and what's going on. What we're looking at long-term, uh, our target audience for this is really the student that wants to explore general education classes, knock out some of those gen ed requirements, because they know they're gonna pursue a four-year degree, and they want to go ahead and get a head start on some of these things, the basic social studies, English, math, science courses, sometimes it'll even be their fine arts credit, we've explored potentially some, some music a priori courses or public speaking and things of that nature, uh, but all in that Carolina Core, all in that gen ed, gen ed field. Um, students interested in the college experience, it is different than what I described before, it is different than the bell rings and I go to a class here at, you know, Catawba Ridge, Fort Mill, or Nation Ford, this is, I have to be there on time for the professor, they're gonna take attendance, if I don't show, you know, it's not just up to the Fort Mill School District employee, this is real college now off our campus, which we have some of this going on right now with the York Tech programs.
I just want to jump in there and add, the, the goal we're working towards is offering as many of the Carolina Core-type courses as possible, so right now, we have lots of dual credit options, but, um, there's not a set pathway for most of them, some there are, but not for the general ed student that is probably gonna go to a four-year university, we're trying to create pathways for them to transfer into a four-year school with as many credits as possible, uh, from high school.
So, Dr. Wakesis and I have been exploring and looking, talking to York Tech, USEL, what are the opportunities, because we would really like to see our students graduate with at least an associate's degree, maybe even opportunities for a bachelor's when this thing gets up and running, if we were ever to pursue an early college. Um, there are schools where high school students are able to do that, but they're getting far more credits than, than this, this is just the first toe in the pond of some additional opportunities. I have had conversations with the high school principals about the size and scope of this, and to start with, it's very small, um, but, so I want to, want to point out, what it means for our kids is, it's gonna be just like on-campus, these are the same requirements, it is free if they qualify for the LTAP funds, um, basically, being a South Carolina resident, they're going to have the, with six hours, and they're equally yoked, right? We have, um, Monday, Wednesday class for three hours, Tuesday, Thursday for three hours, so we're taking care of that aspect. Uh, students would be responsible for the cost of books, which is a cost associated with our dual credit classes now. Um, students would be responsible for their own transportation, however, I have talked to Mr. Young about potential, uh, shuttle options through transportation, the biggest challenge to that, I think we could probably arrange a shuttle that got them over there and back on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, the problem would be, um, anybody on a Friday, we couldn't go around and collect everyone from their house and bring them to school for third and fourth block, so there are some impediments to that, but we, we've even thought through the options. Right now, it's a, it is an expectation for those attending, like welding class at York Tech, that they provide their own transportation, so this isn't something new, I just wanted, I knew that there'd be a question about, uh, transportation equity there. So, the proposed courses, uh, as Dr. Wakesis said, we really want to hit, we want to have an intentional pathway. I'll be honest with you, this was not an intentional pathway, but they are those gen ed courses. Uh, the first would be History 111, which is early American history, uh, it's basically from colonization to the end of the Civil War, and that's a three-hour course for USEL, it'd be one high school credit, and that's treated the same as our other dual credit weightings, same as an AP course. The other is Psych 101, Introduction to Psychology, this is going to be similar to AP Psychology, and very rarely do we have both an AP course and a dual enrollment course where they're kind of competing for kids. As I mentioned, it's small scale to start with, to start with, they're going to give seven seats to each of our high schools, that's twenty-one students in the school district this year as we pilot it. As we find courses that we know we're going to want, and they can offer some specifically for Fort Mill School District, those numbers will obviously go up, but to start small, we're gonna look for these students, and our high school principals have even told me, hey, losing seven kids from AP Psych, which is already kind of slammed, is not gonna be a problem for them this year.
Is this, uh, first semester or first and second?
This would be first semester, so, so they're getting six hours across two blocks just in first semester, and we are going to work with USEL to select a second semester pathway, so you can count on me in the fall to come back with you, uh, come back with some other offerings, but at this point, we want to hit the ground running by advertising to our students now, and I don't feel comfortable saying this opportunity without getting your blessing that, that we're okay with it. I've gotten the blessing of the principals, that they are okay with this kind of field test, and we would continue to make conscientious choices about what we offered, both for a trajectory towards degree completion, and from a standpoint of not undermining our current college-level programs in the high schools. Any questions?
Yep. So, I, and, and you touched on it, but I guess I just want to figure out a little bit more or clearer picture, and, and I relate back to my kids having done.
And, and I relate back to my kids having done AP courses and gone in with multiple, one went in with, I don't know, a semester and a half already of credits for college between his AP and his dual credits. The other one, similar. How does this vary from, and, and I know AP Psych is always exploding, everybody and their brother wants in there, it's a great class. Um, but how does this then go away from, if, if we're doing this history class, what does that do to our APUSH? What does that do to our EOCs? I mean, I know we said this was a senior class, but the reality is our kids are taking history as juniors. So if they took APUSH, they already got the credit coming to the college point, why, why would I want to do this?
I don't think it's the same group of kids. I would actually say there would be no impact on our EOCs or our US history, A, A push because we're looking at a student who is probably not an A push student in their eleventh grade year. Someone who is saying, hey, I, I just want to foray into, uh, social studies, knockout and elective. I, I do think it's two different, uh, tracks of student, if you will, that will be attracted to it. The student that is, I, I don't want to, uh, call them a GPA chaser, but the ones who are hungry for every point and gaining a hundredth or a tenth of a point to move up in class rank, they're not going to look at this as the big opportunity because you're giving up two blocks to get six credits. Whereas if I were to do like our sociology, um, slash, uh, our sociology dual credit class, I'm getting that same six hours of credit in one block at my school. This is, this is someone different. I really think this is more of a capstone piece of, I got to my senior year, I want to try out college a little bit early and that could be part of who is attracted to this. So I don't think they're competitive. And again, when we get the opportunity to select, be more specific. We would like to see work in some of those other things. Like I said, a public speaking class, a, a music appreciation class that aren't really competing with other things, that would be a draw to, again, that, that student who just wants to get a leg up on it and try a taste of it with the safety net of principals, counselors, mom and dad very close to them, um, I think it would be a good opportunity for them. Great question though, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the administration for the two dual enrollment Carolina Core courses, uh, that being History 111 and Psych 101.
Second.
Motion is second for two new dual enrollment Carolina Core courses. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This is quick as it could.
Close.
Well, and now we have come to our last item on the agenda.
I'll see if I can bring us home, how about that?
All right.
All right.
Okay, let's look at calendar of, of events. Obviously tonight, we got a, we, we didn't pass the full, well, we did pass the budget, we got ninety-nine percent of it done, so. Uh, public hearing and vote on budget. Groundbreaking for agriculture arena, uh, I think you have a forty-.
Monday.
What do we call it?
The Agri.
Agri, yeah, whatever we call it officially. That's Monday at ten, right Mike? And it's going to be at Hickory Grove, so.
Yes.
You probably need to put in that address on your GPS, it'll take you a little longer to get over there.
It's way out there.
It's way out in the middle of, Western York County. Uh, the Foundation for Fort Mill Schools Tech Downing Tournament on Thursday of next week. And then the following week is the, the, uh, Innovative Ideas Conference in Myrtle Beach. Uh, that's, that's two weeks out.
Which is the reason we got to figure out the right date for this secondary budget meeting.
And we can do it, you could do it, you, don't do a night meeting.
We'll figure it out.
Noonish or, or we could do a, uh, the, the next week.
Okay.
Then the staff holiday on third and fourth of July, the Fort Mill PLC Institute on the fourteenth to fifteenth, and then Administrative End Service on the twenty-fourth. Y'all folk, teachers are back at work on the twenty-eighth. We have a short summer, it's going to be, it's going to fly by. And then in August, the first day of school on the fourth, in your first school board meeting scheduled for the fifth. But I think we were going to sh- talk about that schedule tonight, maybe.
Um, we have the schedule, we can share it with the board.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's Tuesday was tentatively when we set up the first meeting. Any dates I left out? Okay, enrollment, uh, eighteen-four-four-four went down a couple, uh, last month. That's the hundred-and-eighty-day final number, that's not your ADM, that's your, that's your enrollment. Uh, and if you add in the seventy or so mid-years, we, I guess we finished the year at eighteen, whatever that would do.
Five or six, somewhere in there.
Eighteen-five or six, yeah. Questions about that? Going over to the attendance, winners, teacher attendance. The, the, uh, Fort Mill High was the highest on the high schools, a second, forty, ninety-four point eight, five percent of teachers in attendance in May. Fort Mill Middle was third, ninety-four point one, and Gold Hill Elementary first, ninety-seven point five eight. So, this was going to be my last meeting, but we got one more, so. I, I was gonna say, in case we do something like breakfast or something, I was gonna say, I think I've sat through, you do the math. Let's say two a month and we don't meet in a couple of months. I'm talking about board meetings now. And then, Chris, you can help me with the math. Um, let's call it twenty conservatively.
Yeah.
Maybe eighteen, maybe twenty-one. Times fifteen, I think that comes out to be, what's the math on that? Three fifty, three hundred and something board meetings? That's not hours, that's board meetings. That means we, that means we came up here and we started at six and now it's nine fifteen or whenever we started. Um, then in the fifteen years prior to that, I was an assistant superintendent and a, and a director. And I, we didn't come when I was a principal, uh, we, we didn't attend meetings then, we were so small. We trusted everybody to tell us what was going on, I guess, as principals. The, uh, so you double it, um, so I guess that's six hun- call it six hundred meetings, um, and it's been a pleasure. I've enjoyed all of it. I don't want to get, I don't want to get sad tonight, we've had a lot of celebration going on, but that's, that's six hundred meetings of, um, doing the poet's work and, um, and the people in the room do it and the people on this board do it. And we're, we're all to be commended, I believe, for that. Let's go to executive session.
Well, not yet, not yet.
Not yet.
Michelle.
I'm saying, do we want to do that? All right, do that. So.
There's more.
Always. There's more. So I want to first point out the wrapping paper. You have, um, worked very hard over your forty-nine years in education um, to bring a world-class education to the students of our district and other unnamed places because nobody's as awesome as us, come on. Um, and so I thought that it was appropriate that the wrapping paper would be the world because you've brought the world. Um, and this is from us, from the board. This is a means for you to go off to retirement, but to make you do something.
Make you get out of the house.
That's right.
You're going to have to get out of the house and.
Should I need to open it or?
Yeah, you can.
Or could you just tell me? I don't have scissors and.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm just not telling you, you just have to open it. Right? Exactly what it is.
For a hundred and sixteen dot, well, maybe.
A hundred dollars.
I don't, I don't lose job, I want to deliver the mail, that's all.
Got a great job.
That's a great job, actually.
Don't tell Lou that, he'll get worried. This, this is good, this is what I need to get out of the house, you're all right.
Well, there's a little, no, there's a little more to it than that, so just open it, open the.
Masters tickets?
No, no. Open the box.
They're all.
They're all.
Fun golf balls.
And they are, and I thought, well, you know, I do have a Sharpie with me that perhaps we would each choose one of those golf balls and put our initial on it. And that way, when you hit them.
Say he's going to send mine sailing.
And you send them sailing somewhere.
It's like a message in the bottle.
And no, what have us, you just sent sailing.
You know, you think about golf and you got that big green area in the middle and then you got all the rough. Well, you, you're supposed to hit in the green in the middle, I never, I'm going, always playing this.
Well, you're going to practice and get better at that.
That's right, because that's what that is, is for you to go to the range to practice.
Well, thank you, that's awesome. That'll, that'll get me, um, getting more exercise than I get now, for sure.
Right? I can relate.
Yeah, that's, uh.
And then, because. We always bet a quarter. And, and I believe, I'm not sure if this is enough, but these, he'll always say, I, I bet you a quarter. I bet you a quarter. And I have learned, I, I got wiser and I stopped taking the bets. Most of this is from my first year as a board member because, um, he, he won the bets because he knew what he was talking about. And the rest of us didn't.
You've been on a hot streak lately, uh.
So there's you, there's you some quarters for all the good advice that you've given over the years and the, uh, the words of wisdom that I should have perhaps listened to the first time.
Uh, I, I will thank you and commend you on your decision moving forward. I think Ray's the perfect choice and I think y'all did it the right way and, and, uh, he emerged, uh, through the process and, and that makes me feel good in leaving and, um, uh, I don't know what to say. Y'all, y'all been so nice to me and everybody's been so nice. I'm, I'm glad the retirement tour is about over, I know you are. Uh, we still got a few things left though, don't we?
Yeah, a little bit.
And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get emotional, so y'all know how much I care about this place. Move every minute.
Motion to go into.
All right.
Sadly, at nine-twenty, we are still in need of an executive session.
Probably got another hour to go.
To discuss legal issues, contractual issues.
Add minutes onto those.
Personnel recommendation.
Motion to go into executive session.
Thank you.
All right, executive session, thanks everybody for joining.
Thanks, Michelle.